It's so wonderful to see everybody on this beautiful, beautiful spring day. I want to welcome our guests to this afternoon's meeting. And we'll get right into our agenda. Welcome my colleagues, Board of Supervisors and broadband authority members. So I am officially calling the meeting to order at 2:05 PM. The first item on our agenda is approval of our February 18th minutes. Are there any requests for any changes, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain the motion to approve as submitted.
Shall we move?
Thank you, and I'll give a second to Mr. Tatum. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that carries unanimously. Very, very good. Okay, we're going to move directly into our VADI project updates. Mr. Sandy.
I think I can do it from here. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I know we have a lot to kind of get through and get into in this hour session before our regular meeting, so I won't belabor that point. We can get started. I kind of, with the agenda, I think we'll generally go in that order, I think, but we'll do Chantel first and then Appalachian Power, then we can do River Street and follow up with Zitele. So basically going from kind of our oldest projects, our longest standing projects, to our newest project and get some project updates. So if you're ready, we can go ahead and turn it over to Jesse to start with the Chantel.
Yes, Jesse, please. We're so glad to see you this afternoon. Thank you for being here.
Bring the mic down a little bit. Sure. All right. How do you? Oh, there we go. All right. Good afternoon. So I wanted to give you a quick, oop, there we go, quick update on where we are with the 2021 and the 2022 Chantel project in the county here. Again, just to recap, our 2022 project is 3,508 subsidy homes, about 520 miles of new plant. We have an extended date currently right now to October of 2025 to be substantially construction complete there. In total, it's about a $30.5 million project. The county's contribution is about 20%, about $6 million. VADI, the state, is 38%, about $11.8 million. And then Chantel's contribution is $12 million, about 41%. So again, these are the cabinet areas that we have designated. All those cabinet areas are fully constructed and fully in service. We've got one in Hardy, Boons Mill, Faram, Redwood, and then in Westlake. All those are done. On the 22 project, so so far to date, we've got about 1,985 of our VADI locations completed. That's out of the 3,508, so about 57% are currently serviceable. We've got our design and permitting completed. Again, the five cabinet locations are complete and serviceable. And to date, we've spent about $24.2 million through April for the project thus far, about 80%. Currently in construction, we've got about 417 homes that are currently in the construction phase, and we anticipate getting those completed by the end of June with a caveat that there are several that we are still pending AEP permits for. We've been able to start construction, and we're building around some permit areas that we have not received permitting yet for those areas. So again, we anticipate based on AEP's projection that we get those completed by June, but again, there is some risk there. Again, we've got about 500 additional locations that will be under construction before the end of June. Again, those are pending AEP permits being completed on those. So by the end of June, we anticipate about 2,400, about 68% of our homes being serviceable. There's just a quick map of showing the locations that we currently have in service. The green are already in service. The yellow are ones that are under construction and red are in the permitting stage, we're waiting on permits. So just a quick update on the 21 project. Again, this one's about 612 unserved locations, 417 actual homes, and this one has about 200 lots associated with it, whereas the other, the other project doesn't have lots associated with it, which is a little bit different. It's about 28 miles of new plant. Again, this one's extended also until October of 2025 for substantial completion, and those are the dollar amounts and the percentages there and below. So on the 2021, we've got 167 locations complete plus 61 vacant lots. It's about 37% complete. Engineering and permitting are already submitted and completed, and cabinets are fully constructed and in service. We've spent about $1.65 million thus far. We have about 103 locations that are currently under construction plus 18 vacant lots, and we hope to get those in service by the end of May. Again, that's a caveat that AEP completes some issues that we've had post-make-ready. We had some, we had our permits issued for this one area. We've run into some issues with the make-ready not being completed on, after we've gotten out there, so that's again a caveat. We hope to get those completed. Those are our priority with AEP at the moment. And again, we anticipate another 258 locations to be under construction by the end of second quarter, by the end of June, and that'll get us to about 99% of our project. Again, this is a map. I know it's a little small there, but the red are ones, areas that are still in permitting. Yellow are under construction there at the top, and a couple little areas that are in green, which are serviceable today. So just kind of wanted to go over where we are with AEP because I know that's the big kicker right now. Again, just to kind of go from top to bottom of this chart here, 2021 Franklin, VADI Passings, 612 is the commitment, and 3,508 are for the 22 project, so about 4,100 in total of the two projects. To date, we've got about 228 of the 21 project done, so 37%, and about 1,985 of the 22 project, which is 57%. We do have a number of non-VADI locations that we've covered along the way. We've passed about 1,122 locations that weren't part of the project, but we've passed them and picked them up anyway. So in total, we've released and in-serviced 3,335 homes to date. So what we have left, 103 under construction for the 21 project, 417 for the 22 project, and another 270 homes under construction that are non-VADI, that we're passing along the way. And that'll give us to about 4,125 thus far. So talk a lot about permitting and where we are with AEP. The majority of our permits in Franklin County for this project have been with AEP. We've permitted 10,769 poles so far. We've been given 460 temp-attach permits, excuse me, poles so far. So we have about 2,755 poles yet to be completed and permitted through AEP. That'll get us to another 1,278 homes that we anticipate passing if we get those permits completed. And then we've got another, what we call Phase Two, another about 300 poles that we anticipate submitting to AEP for permitting. Those are generally poles that, you know, as we've rerouted things or had property owner issues come up, that we've had to reapply for things, you know, property owner, you know, we think we have a public utility easement, property owner won't allow us on the property, so we have to reroute things around an aerial route where we thought we could go buried versus, you know, go on that underground route. So we do have about 30, 300 poles yet to be permitted with AEP, but again, that's such a small number of the total number of permits and the number of homes. That encompasses only about 144 of the homes that are part of the 4,000, so very, it's about 3% of the poles still remaining to be submitting permitting. So where we are with AEP, so yes, we have had an enormous amount of permits that we've submitted through AEP for part of this project. We started permitting back in 2022 and submitted, again, almost 11,000 pole permits for this project. We've escalated it multiple times to kind of regroup with AEP, you know, put some priorities on them multiple times. In fact, we had a meeting, Steve brought together all of us last week and talked about priorities and where AEP thinks they're going to land on these permits that we have in the pipeline today. They anticipate that they will get those done by July. That's the target goal right now for AEP. Chantel plans to follow up immediately upon receipt of those permits. We're right behind them on their tails, essentially with crews waiting right now to get out there and do the work. What I do want to show you, and I brought this just as kind of a visual of where we are, so as we divide these projects up into DSAs or Designated Service Areas, this happens to be two projects. The top half is one DSA, it's Faram Four, the bottom half is Faram Six. So as we submit permits, generally a pole permit has 50 poles on it, give or take. And AEP, we've put a priority on each of one of these permits throughout our two, almost three years now with these projects, and we ask AEP to complete, if you see the ones on the right, complete all those permits in one cluster so we can complete that DSA, and then you work to the next DSA area. And what we're finding is a lot of jumping around so that we can't necessarily complete a, an area. If you'll see the green there are permits as of today that we have, the yellow are the ones that we don't have yet, so there's just not a lot of continuity that we can complete the work. While we do have some permits, there's just not a lot of continuity that we can complete and get crews out there and just roll through some areas and have connectivity. If you can see the very tip-top there, that one yellow, this one, this area, we have to have this one to light our cabinet up and get connectivity to all the others below it. That permit's been out there since 2022. We're still waiting on it. And then, you know, we can, we can roll through the rest of them, but we have to have connectivity to be able to complete those areas. So a visual of kind of where we're at with our permitting, you know, we strategically put priorities on these permits, and we ask AEP to complete them in that priority. It's our understanding that AEP has eight crews assigned to our work right now. We are very hopeful that we can get those permits completed by July, and we are, Chantel remains committed to getting the work done, and we are right on the heels of AEP once we get those permits from us. So just want to talk about one more thing, the Virginia Make-Ready Initiative. This is where the state of Virginia had additional funds left over at the end of the project for the 22 projects where we were allowed to apply for areas that had high make-ready or we switched from aerial to undergrounding, and we have been awarded multiple rounds thus far. We have a seventh round that we just submitted maybe two weeks ago for 154,000. In total, we've asked for about $2 million in the Make-Ready Initiative Fund, and Steve and staff have been very helpful getting those submitted for us, so we very much appreciate that as well. So in summary, Chantel remains committed to getting this project to completion by the October deadline. Again, we're very much, it's contingent on AEP finishing this make-ready work for us and getting those timely completions out to us so that we can have, they can complete them by July, that gives us a very short window to get the remaining work done, but we will throw everything we have at it to get that work done in a timely manner by October. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Open to questions.
Yes, thank you, Jesse. Do any of the broadband members have any comments to make or questions?
No.
Okay, Jesse, I just have, first of all, Chantel's been a very good partner to the county, and we very much appreciate that. I know in some of our previous discussions and/or meetings, there was some discussion where Chantel was gracious to offer up supplementary support to AEP. Have any of those proposals continued, and if they have, have they been accepted?
So we, Chantel proposed back in December of last year, I believe, November, December, to bring in additional crews that Chantel would manage, complete the work for our projects. AEP declined that offer. However, they did bring in an additional project manager and eight additional crews that are managed by AEP. They did not start probably until February on our work, and they've been, they've been pulled to storm damage quite a bit throughout the remainder of the project. So we hope, and we've been told that they won't be pulled for storm damage, but they have been.
Okay. Jesse, I very much appreciate your thoughtful presentation. Lots of good data on your slide deck, and I appreciate that because we like to be pretty data-driven when it comes to broadband and the expectations our citizens have of us to get things done. So this very much helps us, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
I think you're done.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we will hear from Rob Taylor, River Street.
Would you do AEP?
That wasn't next, but we can do it.
We have to Rob, so we'll switch, we'll do Rob Mann next.
That's what I thought, and I'm just going down the agenda.
You can follow up on your AEP.
Okay. Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense. Rob Mann, of our many Robs. Welcome, Rob. We're glad to have you this afternoon.
Glad to be here. Good, my name's Rob Mann. I'm with Appalachian Power and External Affairs. Just want to follow up where we are with the make-ready. We did, as Jessica mentioned, have a meeting that Steve kind of orchestrated, got everybody together last week, I think was productive, to kind of go over some of the questions and concerns that have been out there. Just to reiterate, we did have a change in some management. You know, you mentioned, your last question was the offer for Chantel to help AEP. We are considering that if, you know, that is on the table now. I think it's pretty late in the game to, for that to work, but we also do have project management looking at this closely, dedicated to this project, and one project manager that's overseeing the entire thing. As mentioned, two, the eight additional crews that are working specifically here in Franklin County, they are assigned to this project. I just want to clarify one thing, you know, AEP, Appalachian Power is committed to safe, reliable power, so storms do take precedence over this project. Just to make, get that elephant out of the room, if there are storms, these crews will be pulled away.
We hadn't had no bad storms in Franklin County this year.
Yeah, so I know everybody, and even this past weekend, crews weren't working Monday. They were pulled, we had heavy storms in southwest Virginia, southern West Virginia that our crews were traveling back to this area yesterday. So they're back on the job today, but we are working as hard as we can to meet the July 1st date that was discussed. We are actually doing some additional work too that AEP is, as I understand it, covering the cost of. Typical work week is four 10s. We have them working five, 10-hour days. It is also being considered to have them work Saturdays as well. So we are taking steps internally to ensure that, you know, the make-ready work is completed, you know, in the June, 1st to July timeframe. On the permitting side of things, as Jessica mentioned, also what, we created some new definitions with that meeting last week. Phase one is everything that's already been submitted to date, not the additional homes that Jessica mentioned in her presentation. That would be after the, you know, that would be phase two, which I understand is just a small portion. So things that are in queue now, we are committed to getting that work done by July 1st. That's a pretty brief update on the make-ready. Like I say, I think, I think last week we did make some headway, gaining some more understanding between their distribution permitting side of things with Steve at the county level and also Chantel. So we're committed to working directly with Chantel. They've been good partners in the past, and, you know, we're committed to meeting your schedule, their schedule, and what we've committed to with the VADI projects.
Thank you, Rob. Does that conclude your report?
No, I will speak a little bit towards the River Street portion.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. We are working as far as what we're working with River Street on. We're in pretty good shape at this point. Dickinson and Sago Projects, they are out issued for construction. Indicott Project, we're about 50% complete on that one, and then the Ingramville, we're about 30% complete on that. So one, one thing, we do have the actual point-of-presence locations, that that work is being started the end of this month, and that's so River Street can energize everything. I need to get an actual completion date for that, but that is a question for them to get their project active that I do need to follow up on. I anticipate it's going to be later summertime, but just want to throw that out there in case anybody had questions on the point-of-presence sites. And that concludes my...
Okay. Thank you, Rob. I would like to open the floor for any comments, questions, or concerns from my authority members. Floor's open, gentlemen.
I have none.
Nobody? I have a couple things, if I may, Rob, on behalf of the authority. I've got to be very honest. I remain extremely disappointed in AEP's lack of performance dealing with 2021 and 2022. I mean, it's 2025, and we're in our second extension with the state. And I will be very honest with you. It is May 20th, and you're setting a July 1st date. None of the dates you all have set have been met. I have no confidence July 1st is certainly going to happen. It's just historical trends have not, you know, represented to us that anything is going to be met, and that's of concern. And I can tell you back in January, when this authority, you know, we've been very active and proactive about getting these poles and so forth done with, you know, we're looking at over 10,000 poles. And the fact of the matter is, we're here almost halfway into the year. We've got another VADI deadline, and for AEP to be putting our other Chantels, River Street, to be putting us in a position with the state for the reasons that we are all aware of is unacceptable. And my colleagues, I'm not speaking on behalf of the authority, this is just Lori Smith speaking this, and I just, you know, it's unfortunate in my estimation, after these projects been, they've been in 2021 and 2022, we have now eight crews working five 10s in some cases, and they're being pulled off for storms. Now, I'm not going to begrudge the fact that we needed help with the two storms that we had. That's absolutely a critical component. However, the kind of pressure that you all are under to promote and execute on behalf of the localities for a totally different issue, I am disappointed that there have not been dedicated crews that won't be pulled off to further extend deadlines and delays. That is very disappointing to us, and I would really, I don't know how you all are going to meet a July 1st deadline, quite honestly. I would like to request on behalf of the authority that, at this point, I would like, and Steve, I don't know what your intentions are, and I may be crossing something you've already dealt with, I think we need weekly updates from AEP between now and July 1st. And Steve, have you crossed that with them yet?
No, we have our regular monthly meeting, and we're pretty much in contact weekly, but, I mean, we can start getting, you know, weekly updates as well, yeah.
Yeah, I would like our authority to have weekly updates because, quite honestly, I'm ready for, to take next steps. We are on the hook with the state. We're on the hook with our citizens and businesses of Franklin County, and in my opinion, this has risen to the level of unacceptable. And so we're going to closely monitor the next 45 days, and in the interim and leading up to that, I would like for our authority to agree to be, you know, pulling the trigger on some next steps. And it is my fervent hope, truly, sincerely, that you all can meet your July 1st deadline. That'll make life a whole lot easier for a lot of us. So understand, we hear your rationales. We just are disappointed, I would say, and it's hard for us to defend the kinds of things that we're hearing from AEP now. It's been year after year, not month after month, and I just don't understand it from a management perspective. So having given those few comments, any other comments from the authority members?
I had, I had one, if you don't mind.
Please, please.
And just to follow up on that, we, I think we can do, at a minimum, we could do the number of permits that are out there, and then maybe the number that were approved in a given week and kind of run a total of how they're kind of chipping away at that number.
That'd be great.
We'll come up with some, some way to report that. I assume, I assume that's kind of what you were getting at.
Yes.
Not, not a personal visit weekly.
No, 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 no. I just want to see that we're making measurable process against the goal.
Yeah, so we can do some sort of a table or some sort of spreadsheet that kind of shows.
Yeah.
How many they ticked away each week.
And then share that with the authority on a weekly basis, if you don't mind doing that.
We can do that. My question was going to be about the one item that Jesse mentioned about, the one in particular that was at kind of the head of the line, so to speak, and it was really holding up a lot of their other work until they could get that piece established. Can you speak to some of that? I think...
I'm unable to right now, Steve. Yeah, I will, I took note of that in the presentation, and we'll follow up and be able to provide information on that specifically, yes.
So I think some of their priorities were, for some of those reasons in particular, that they had to have, they had to have this piece in order to do a lot of the other work, and so when they don't get that piece, it holds up a lot of the other activities.
Completely understand the rationale. Yeah, we're in the same, as far as construction.
Rob, I had one more question, and you may not know the answer to this. Is there any reason why AEP has not accepted Chantel's offer of support and assistance last, a year ago?
Previous management, that was their thought process, that it was an internal process that we wanted to have control over, and that was rationale. However, with the influx, the amount of work that is out there, you know, there's, with the grant money, as y'all understand, many multiple service providers have been requesting this type of work. So we, as a company, we have our own standards, engineering standards, construction standards, and we want to manage that ourselves. Now, there is a new person in place in our distribution planning workforce, I'm sorry, that is agreeable to entertain that idea.
Okay, and so when will we know if, what the answer to that will be?
Well, it, I think it's going to, if Chantel would like to request that, we will definitely entertain it.
I think they requested it a year ago.
Well, the offer was extended last week, you know, so...
Okay, all right, fair enough, fair enough.
Now, I, if you don't mind, I just do want to speak to the escalation level.
Please.
This is at the president level of AppCo.
Okay.
Aaron Walker is our president. He's out of Charleston office.
Yeah.
He's getting updates on this, if not weekly, bi-weekly. So understand your frustration as, at the county level. It is escalated within the company.
Thank you for sharing that. That's very meaningful for us to know that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we appreciate you being here and providing this report. I know it's no fun being asked the tough questions, but we do appreciate you being here, Rob.
Thank y'all for having me, and I hope we can talk on better terms next.
Yes, indeed. We look forward to that.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll just point out one thing. Point out one thing while Rob Taylor's coming up. I passed around just kind of our little spreadsheet we've done for you, just to give you kind of progress by election district, and the numbers are a little less on this sheet because these numbers are from a month ago versus, she reported 57%, I think is roughly about what they've completed, and we're showing it around 50, 51. But the reason for that is because the data we're using is several weeks behind.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yes.
So just if you were looking at the numbers, just, you know, I think real time, they're about 57% complete on the Chantel project.
Okay.
Versus the 50 that you see on that sheet.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate that clarification. Okay, I'm here with Mr. Taylor.
Rob Taylor.
Do I dare call you Rob, number two, or Rob, number one?
I should have been Rob, one that we chose, but I'm good, I'm good.
Well, we welcome you this afternoon.
Thank you.
And thank you for being with us.
So I have an update on the River Street project, a quick overview, and I should have put this in a slide, but I'll have it next time with an overview. But again, our project is approximately $25 million. but I'll have it next time with an overview. But again, our project is approximately $25 million. Before you take out the work that AEP is doing, AEP is bringing in about $10 million worth of matching funds or make-ready type work and stuff. The rest of the funds are divided through a federal grant that we were able to get. It was like $2.8 million from Rural Digital Opportunity Fund. We are also able to take 1.8 million from the county, as well as 2.6 million from River Street, and put that together to leverage 7.2 million from VADI. Our, our passings will be 2,745, but as you'll see here in a little bit, we're actually passing about, about 2,900 locations. So right now, we're in the process of trying to get several of our VDOT permits completed and through. We've got one VDOT permit approved, and we have the remaining five are ones we're waiting for bonding. There's two waiting on comments to come back from VDOT, and then there are two are being reviewed right now by VDOT. Now, keep in mind, on our project, the fiber that is being installed by AEP is going to be the middle mile fiber. And so it will go down their pole lines and then drop down to the ground where we'll take it and extend it out along these VDOT routes to the end customers. Now, there could be areas or locations at which we actually bring drops straight off of their poles, but most of the time, we'll be bringing it into a ground parcel and then extending it over to the different locations. So that's why we're having to go after so many VDOT permits as well. When he was speaking earlier about the Point of Presence, so once they, as they get the fiber installed, they'll be putting out these buildings that they'll put their electronics in so that they can light the fiber, and then the fiber will become usable to us that we can then extend the services out to the, the different neighborhoods and areas of the county that we're going to be passing. So, right here is an overview. So AEP has completed the Dickinson routes, one and two. It's about 24.9 miles. They've also completed Sego Road, which is about 12.3 miles. And they currently have under construction Indicott and Ingramville. And you'll see kind of a layout there of some of those areas. They've been actively building these areas probably since the beginning of this year. Remember, our project had about a year delay because the State Corporation Commission didn't have enough judges to sit to give us the utility leverage program that we needed to allow them to build the middle mile to begin with. So, here's an overview of what our construction looks like. We currently have about 58 locations in the county that have services coming out of the Pennsylvania County area. And I have a slide later on that shows you, of those 50, I think we have about four active customers already signed up and hooked up with those services. But you'll see here, this is, shows you the layout of the approximately 2,800 to 2,900 locations that will be passing in the county. Here's a closer review of not only the, the locations that have service, but also the breakdown. So there's 58 locations that have access to service. There's four that are connected. And then we have 2,820 still to provide services out in the county. Again, these are right along the border with, mainly with Pennsylvania counties where we're serving them out of. So, once we get our fiber lit up, or as we get closer to it, we'll start sending out mailers. And what we typically do is we mail out postcards to the residences along the areas that we can provide services. We also start doing radio ads and any local print ads that might be available. We sometimes do door hangers, but we find that they, it's difficult to get those staffed, especially if it's not during the summer hours, right? So in the summer, we can normally get interns and other people to do that, but, and hopefully this will line up to where we're, we're doing that this summer. But we're still, again, waiting for the fiber to get lit up there. Then, as we get closer, the postcards will change, and they'll be notified that the fiber is coming, and they'll be asked to go to a website or call our toll-free number in which we can register their interest to get service. Once they register, then they don't have to keep checking with us. What that will do is put them in our queue, and as our, those areas become serviceable, then we'll contact them and let them know service is available and see if they want to sign up for services. That map that I was showing you earlier is also navigable by customers. If they wanted to, they could go to myriverstreet.net, go down to Fiber Build Updates, select the county, and from there, they'll be able to see the county map. They can either search their address, or they can locate it on the map either using this version, which is a Google Maps version, or a Google Earth version of this map, and find their location. Again, they can click on that. As we start construction, you'll see those blue dots turn to yellow so the people know where we're building at. And as the construction is completed, then they'll, they'll turn to gray and be in that pre-order area. That's when we try to get more and more people interested because it'd be very soon that we could start turning up the services. And then once service is available, they'll turn to green. At the same time, we also like to do, with the county, we always like to do a groundbreaking ceremony. So once we have fiber builds going on, we want to do a groundbreaking ceremony. We also like to do signup days. We find it very helpful in rural communities to partner with some community anchor locations to set up signup days to get people. Even though they can go here, a lot of people prefer to come up and talk to you about it.
Sure.
So, anyway, I, this, if we do have a signup day, that's where you go to the bottom of the map, where the, your map is, to the bottom of that. If we had a signup day, it would be down there, and people can actually register. They could go on and sign up for one of our time slots, or they can just come by and see if somebody's available to talk to them. But we also have where you can set up an appointment if you wanted to. That's all I had. If you have any questions.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you so much. Questions from authority members, inquiries, comments? Well, it sounds like you all are moving right along. I know it's, the environment's difficult.
Yeah, we're anxious to get our construction going on so we can start getting customers passed.
Right, right. And I know it'll be greatly appreciated, certainly in our more rural areas, and the connectivity will, will be a new world.
Yeah, and I got to drive those rural areas today coming up here. That was, that was only 28 miles, but it took about an hour, so that was quite an interesting drive. And I came right up Sego Road, so yes.
We're a very large county. Rob, we appreciate everything that you all are doing.
Thank you.
And just let us know with Steve. I know you're in contact with Steve. What more we can do to assist you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Rodney Gray from Zitel. Good afternoon, Rodney.
While Amy's loading that up, his presentation, just, you know, Zitel's one of our newer partners, just started some activity. I don't want to steal all this thunder, but I'll let him kind of explain and kind of give kind of the first update from, from their project. They were a 2024 VADI award, if you recall, and so we've asked them to start coming and start giving us some updates as their work is beginning, so.
Very good. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me today. My name is Rodney Gray. I'm the chief operating officer for Zitel. For those of you who don't know, Zitel is headquartered in Bedford County. Our main office is right over in the downtown Manita area, and we operate our customer service and our corporate offices out of that area. So, we are a 2024 VADI award winner for Franklin County. Construction has already begun. Unlike other providers, about 90 to 90% of all of our plant is underground.
Rodney, can I interrupt you and ask you to move the microphone maybe closer to you, or more, if that's, if that's better?
Raise it up a little bit. Is that a little better? I'll, I'll lean in too.
Thank you, Rodney. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Not a problem. So, this is an overview of our footprint that we have for the 2024 VADI grant. It's 215 miles of fiber. 5,530 total passings of customers we'll be able to provide service to, 2,371 eligible passings. This is, this is POP 2, which is down in the North Lakes area, coming down Scruggs Road. This POP will be hosted. We're already in contact with Scruggs Volunteer Fire Department and the chief there. We're going to host our POP out of the Volunteer Fire Department, and in exchange for that, we're going to provide them with free internet and phone services for the life of the IRU that we're going to have with them.
Thank you very much for that.
We do that in Bedford County at six different volunteer fire and rescue facilities right now. They get a free, the highest speed small business package and SIP trunking phone services that we have. We provide that free services for them in exchange for basically five square feet inside of a closet. So, to, to place equipment. POP 2 out of the North Shore area, out of Scruggs, is already under construction. It's, the total is about 29 miles of fiber, about 924 passings, 188 eligible passings. We have probably about 10 miles of that already built. Most of it is on private gravel roads. We start there because they're much easier. It's all permitted with VDOT. All the permits are in place. Everything's ready to go for that entire package. POP 1 is the one that connects back into Bedford, Bedford County across Halesford Bridge. We have secured an IRU. IRU is an irrefutable right to use for 124. We call it tails of fiber to cross the bridge with mid-Atlantic broadband. In exchange, we're going to perform the construction project, any construction project they need, and pay for the pulling of fiber through their existing conduit. So that it'll expand Mid-Atlantic's broadband's capabilities to provide middle mile fiber because they'll be able to put in more of their own fiber, and then they'll provide us with 124 tails of fiber to cross the lake.
Rodney, if I may, what are the blue demarcations on the mapping, the previous one and this one?
Blue shows where we're going to use an underground bore machine.
Okay.
Red designates where we're going to use a plow machine.
Thank you.
It's, it's, engineering pulls it from the construction prints.
Okay.
To make these maps for me. So they're actual, these are actually from the construction prints. So, blue designates where we're going to use a horizontal bore machine, and red is designated where we're anticipating using a plow. And of course, that can change as they get out onto the roadways. It all determines how much rock you get, how much, if somebody's paved their driveway, or if you have road crossings because of easement problems, where it's going to be better to get on the other side of the road. So, the construction prints that we submit to VDOT, they're, you know, mostly set in stone, but you got to have some latitude to make some changes on the fly when you get actually on the job site. So, this one is marked as waiting for permits. That is incorrect. All the VDOT permits have been issued for this. I think we got those back this morning. They just, I told them not to worry about updating the, the slide. So, POP 2 has been fully permitted by VDOT and returned. This is POP 3. It's about 45 miles of fiber. We're preparing, it's already been completely engineered, and we're preparing those prints to be sent to VDOT to get permitted. We don't expect any issues with that one either. This is POP 4. Engineering's complete. They're working on the preparation. We'll submit this one to VDOT when we get the other one returned. The overview, this is POP 5, which is the stretch through the town of Rocky Mount, south going towards Martinsville. The, that is still in engineering to be engineered. Showing some issues, of course, to, to, to some of the routes that we're going, but the engineering, they'll be through it. That's about 51 miles and about 1,500 total passings. Right now in Bedford County, we're finishing up our 2022 VADI project, which, after the re-scope with Bedford County, increased from 410 miles up to 570 miles of fiber in ground placement. We're going to be completed with that by the end of June. We're in the final stages. I think we've got about five miles of fiber to place. We'll be completely at the closeout at that, which means we met it on time and within the contracted period. Right now in Bedford County, we're in the midst of our rock. There's a lot of rock in the area of Bedford County. We don't anticipate a lot of rock in the areas of Franklin County that we've engineered according to our geological studies. So we're estimating with our in-house crews and subcontractors that we already have contracted to move from Bedford County into Franklin County, we estimate we're going to build about, anywhere between 10 to 15 miles of fiber per month. So we estimate this entire project will be done in basically 16 to 18 months, which will be four months shy of the projected 24-month contracted.
Very good.
Any questions?
Thank you. Questions from authority members, comments? Rodney, thank you so much.
So, we do anticipate the first customers in Franklin County, which will be in the West Lake area.
Okay.
As we, because we, we're, not because we're having any provincial treatment to any one area, but that's where we come first, crossing with the connections coming out of Bedford County.
It's just a geography base.
Just a geography base because we're coming across the lake out of Bedford County. We expect those first customers to be turned up around the 1st of August.
Well, we appreciate the partnership we have with you, Rodney, and you all are obviously executing, executing. And that's really, really great to see, and congratulations on that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, Mr. Sandy. I'll give you maybe five minutes as we're running up against our three o'clock hour.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief. Just some, really just some information that was in your packet regarding the Broadband Advisory Council meeting. There was some information about BEED, the BEED program. There's a handout that I got that, just passing around, just about internet usage and the importance of, of internet. And then, the, the last piece of your package was really about the, part of the BEED non-deployment, about the cellular, expanding the cellular program, and, and I know I spoke to that several times, is using some of that BEED money to actually build more towers and, and attach more antennas in more places throughout the Commonwealth. I'll, I'll just, I will tell you briefly, when it comes to BEED, that there is some concern, I guess, on my part. I'm not sure how much concern there is statewide, but I do have some concern. After the new administration, that the federal government had pulled back some of the, the BEED, our digital equity money, which was about 18 million, which was supposed to go to Virginia, that was pulled back. That was not technically part of BEED, but BEED, how do I say this politically correct? Is, BEED may have some aspects to it that the administration may not fully believe in. And so I guess in my mind, there's just some question maybe as to how secure is that funding? And so, the state is supposed to be getting $1.4 billion from the federal government for this program, and the, the, the part that concerns me the most is that the state has spent probably close to two years working on this program, putting it together. The way this works is the state had to develop a, a whole new program. The state had to really identify how they were going to spend all that money. And then what they do is they give all that packet, basically that whole packet goes to the governor. The governor agrees or disagrees with what's in that, and then, then it goes off to the, to the federal government for approval. So, I guess what concerns me the most is that there, so much work has been put into this, and, and it could get to a point where it gets pushed up to the federal government and nothing comes back as far as funding. And so that is a concern, just personal, a personal concern, just because that's really the program. We're going to get the rest of our citizens connected, and it's not just us. It's throughout the, well, throughout the country, really, but especially in Virginia, that program is, is really envisioned to finish where VADI, you know, pick up where VADI left off and, and connect the rest of the people. And so for us, that's a couple thousand, a couple hundred, not 100,000. I think it's 2,800, 2,800 households that we still have yet to get connected. And, and so we hope they'll get connected through that, through the BEED program. So, just, again, that's, that's a concern I have is, you know, is that money secure? And is that money safe, or will part of it be removed, or all of it? And, and I don't know that anybody has an answer to that at this point, but seeing that that 18 million was pulled away just kind of made me a little more concerned about it. And maybe some of the folks, the broadband ISPs in the room probably have some of the same concerns, so. But the, the good news is for us, is Virginia is near the front in, in that whole process. And so, we'll be probably in the top 10 of states actually submitting all the information to the federal government for approval. So hopefully, that will happen in the next couple of months is when that's envisioned to happen. And so, just putting that on your radar as you're having conversations, you know, and it may be something that, as an authority, we, we send some correspondents or, or speak to legislators, just, just with the concerns and maybe just reiterating the importance of the program as far as providing that connectivity for the remainder of our, you know, our citizens.
And Steve, I'll interject at this point. I, I would like to know if the authority would give me permission. I really do think that we need to have at least a teams meeting and bring our federal legislators in from Virginia. We really need to express to them the sense of immediacy to make sure that this money flows into the state. And then we can, you know, work with our state legislators, but if the authority is in support of us convening a discussion on the federal level to kind of try to push this along and support it in a more proactive fashion in DC, that's what I would recommend, but I won't do so unless the, the authority thinks that's a good idea. Comments? Mr. Carter?
I think it's a great idea, and maybe direct staff to send some letters.
I think it's a great idea, and maybe direct staff to send us some letters.
Okay. Well, I'm seeing head nods. Everybody okay with that?
It's okay.
Nick, you, you cool?
I'm, I'm fine with that, and I'll save my comments for another minute, for a minute.
Go ahead.
That's all well and good, talking about money we're supposed to be getting, but I'm looking at this paper, and I'm still at nine point eight percent, which is twenty-six households in the Snow Creek District. I'm not worried about the future money, because I'm, we're not getting anything anyway. Verizon called lately?
I, I do have that update for you. You talking about the cell tower?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, again, I'm only, the information I share is only just the information I get. I don't have any control over Verizon, but they, they do tell me they're approved, they've approved and got equipment for three new sites. One of those is Snow Creek. One of them is Kemp's Ford, the, the one that Mr. Quinn has asked about, and then there's one around Cahese Mountain as well. They're, they're telling me that they are hoping to have them all on air by September. Again, I know it's, yes, yes, sir. I know it's a moving target, but again, I'm just, I, I can only relay what I'm being told, but that's...
Well, and I, I just, I get real aggravated with this because the point of VADI funds was to hook up people for internet that didn't already have access to high-speed internet. And it's not happening. It is not happening at all. That is not the way this is being done. Twenty-six households, nine point eight percent. That's the same number as last time.
You're, you're referring to the, the Chantel Project?
Yeah, the others are zero.
Yeah, yeah, because you haven't got anybody connected with River Street yet.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And, and we've been talking about the same old every broadband meeting. Oh, there's so many towers, there's this and that, the other. And nothing's happening. And Lori, I, I'm fine with whatever we do for that other money, but it means nothing to me.
Well, I understand that, and that's, you know, kind of why we've...
We haven't gotten what's going, what was happening in twenty-one and twenty-two.
That's right.
So, I mean, the future money, money we might, might not get doesn't mean anything to me.
Well, you heard my earlier comments.
Well, I'm right there with you.
It's unacceptable.
I mean, twenty-six households.
Yeah. Steve, we need you to move the needle on that, my friend. As my colleague here says, that's why you make the big bucks.
I'll continue to do my best to, to move them all along.
We, we know you're just a facilitator. We understand.
And, and I don't have anything else. I know we're, we're kind of close on time, but there may be some additional comments.
Okay. Any additional comments from the authority? Nick, did you have something? Okay, here and now, I'll accept a motion to adjourn the broadband authority meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Tatum. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ronnie Thompson, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries, and we are adjourned. Thank you all.
All right, let's get our meeting started today. As I look around the room, we've got a lot of visitors with us today. We've got a lot of this county citizens here. We've got members from the Rocky Mount School Board. We've got visitors here from the Rocky Mount Town Councils. We've got visitors here from Uttermost, and we've just got visitors all over it. If I miss some of them, I know I missed somebody. That's the reason why I hate to say those names, because I miss somebody, and then they get mad at me, and I, I don't want you to get mad at me. But anyway, appreciate seeing everybody here today, and thank you for your interest in your county government. At this time, I'm going to just call the meeting to order, and I'm going to ask Supervisor Mike Carter, Mike, if you will do the invocation, and I'm going to ask Supervisor Vice Chair Lori Smith, Lori, if you'll do the pledge to the flag.
Yes, sir.
Let's all stand, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's, it's great to see a crowd here today, and it's not tax time. Normally, when we get a good crowd, it's, it's tax time, and the faces don't look so friendly. But anyway, with that, let us pray. Heavenly Father, we ask that you guide our minds and hearts as we seek knowledge to make decisions for our county today. Help us to govern with diligence and, most of all, integrity. Lord, as we discuss today, the future of our children, help us to provide a positive and supportive learning environment for their future and the future of Franklin County. God bless Franklin County, and God bless America. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for
I want to take a second to, to tell all of my friends here, all of my colleagues, all of my workers. As you all know, my mom passed away a couple weeks ago. I got numerous cards. I had my mama all my life. My mama was ninety-six years old. She drove herself to church on Sunday. I called over Monday morning, she was still in the bed, and she said, "Ronnie, I don't feel good." And I said, "Mom, I'll come over there." My wife and I went over there. We tried to get her in the car, couldn't let her in the car, had to call the ambulance. She, uh, ended up putting her in the hospital. She lived for twelve days. And she told me, she says, "I want to go home, uh, I want to go home to see daddy," that was my daddy, "and she says, 'I want to hold my baby.'" I had a sister that died when she was six months old, and that's what mama told me. And the last person that mama talked to, it was me, and she told me she loved me. I told her I loved her. I had my mama for my whole life. Mama was ninety-six years old, and there was over five hundred people at the funeral. The church was packed. We had three preachers, and it was a great tribute to mom. She was a pastor's wife, and, uh, she got what she wanted. She said, uh, she told the doctors, "No, I'm not doing nothing. You're not doing nothing to me. I'm done. I want to go home." Now, I'm going to tell you all, some of those doctors didn't understand what she meant. They thought she wanted to go back to the house in Benton, but she didn't want to go back to the house in Benton. She wanted to go to her, her heavenly home. And I will tell you all one thing right now. I don't, I'm not preaching, I'm just telling you the truth. If mama didn't go to heaven, ain't none of us got a chance, and that's the truth. If mom was not in heaven, ain't none of us got a chance. And then preachers told that, told that too. I'm not the only one that said that. But anyway, thank you all for your prayers. Thank you all for the cards, for the flowers, the phone calls, the visits, everything. It's greatly, greatly appreciated. All right, let's get back on track enough of that sad stuff. No, I'm going to say this, because y'all going to laugh at this. Now, with mama gone, I got one cousin that's older than me. Other than that, I'm the oldest one. So, yeah. Yeah, I got one cousin older than me, so I'm getting to be an old man, I guess. All right, with all that gone, let's see what we got to do today. Meeting is called to order. We've had our invocation. We need the approval of the agenda. We need the approval of the agenda. Anybody got any amendments or any, anything? Wait a minute, one thing we need to do. Understand that later on this afternoon, between six and seven, Dan's got a meeting that he has to go to, and he wants to be there of a personal matter, and he wants to be in attendance via the telephone, so we need a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to allow Mr. Quinn's virtual participation in our evening meeting.
Second. If we need a second on that? Madam Clerk, will you roll call vote on that?
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right, are there any more motions to the agenda? Or if there's no more motions to the event, agenda, I need a motion on that?
I move the approval of the agenda submitted, Mr. Chair.
Second. If we can do that by a voice vote, all in favor, signify with a c and a.
Aye.
All right, I've got two or three things I got to do.
Do you need some help?
You, you hang on to that for me. Yeah. I need my paper there, Chris. Yes, sir. The only member does. We've got two ladies. Kathy Thurman, forty-eight years of service. Where's she at? There she is. Kathy, if you'll come, and then, uh, Frieda Maddox, forty-nine years of service. Miss Frieda, where's she at? There she is.
They don't look forty-five years old.
Mr. Chairman, did we, did they come to work here right after kindergarten, or what?
Elementary school when y'all started here, is that right? That's what I thought. This here is...
This is for Kathy.
Kathy.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to stand in between, because there's going to be some pictures took. Lori, you going to come over here?
Yeah, I was just, I didn't want to...
Mike's going to take the picture. Get in. He's retiring, son, Mike. You all had to hook us up when I walked. Thank you. Y'all have anything you want to say?
I just want to thank Franklin County for allowing me to work for so long. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
And I just want to thank the citizens and hope that I served them good.
You did.
Ditto.
Did. Thank you all. That's the kind of, that's the kind of employees that Franklin County's got. These are ladies that have been there, their entire life. You're not getting that kind of service anymore. Uh, you know, you can get somebody across the street for, for a nickel. People that are dedicated to their county and dedicated to their citizenry. You got, okay, yeah, thank you very much. And said, thank you. And dedicated to their citizenry and to their county and for what they signed up to do and for that. Now, we've got a, I got to put my glasses on for this. Who all we got here from, I know we got three people here from... From Cooper, I mean, Uttermost. You folks come forward. Everybody here from Uttermost. State your name, please, and your position.
Annette Lawson, the HR manager.
Matt Cooper, President.
And Sarah Alfano, Controller.
Either one of y'all been there forty-nine years? I didn't think so. Hats off to these guys. That's impressive. Resolution of appreciation. Whereas Uttermost, a family-founded company headquartered in Franklin County, Virginia, is celebrating fifty years of excellent innovation and integrity in the home finishing industry. And whereas, established in nineteen seventy-five by Bob and Belle Cooper, Uttermost has grown from a small local business into a global leader, offering more than five thousand products and operating distribution centers in Virginia, Texas, and California, serving top retailers, designers, and hospitality clients around the world. And whereas guided by strong values, Uttermost continues to reflect the spirit of Franklin County through its commitment to quality service, innovation, and its global reputation for delivering fashion, for beauty, crafted home furnishings, while maintaining the authentic fam, family culture upon which it was built. And whereas, as Uttermost celebrates its fiftieth anniversary, it also looks to the future in renewed excitement, striving in honor to, in its legacy, while embracing innovation and opportunities for continued growth and success. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Franklin County, Virginia Board of Supervisors extends its sincere congratulations and heartfelt appreciation to Uttermost for fifty years of outstanding achievement, leadership, and service to the community and the industry. Throughout the community, Uttermost has a, a huge name. Its, uh, its people love them. They take them on a cruise at vacation time. They have lots of incentives for them, and they're one of the better pla, I shouldn't say that, but they're one of the good places to work in Franklin County. Good place to work, and people really love working at Uttermost. And anybody got anything they want to say?
We went to Greenbrier in March.
You went to Greenbrier?
Resort. The South Rire.
All for your fiftieth anniversary?
Yes.
Whoa, how about that? That's pretty cool.
I'd just say a couple words. Yeah, the people of Franklin County, really, we're, we are a world-class organization, but we're right here in Franklin County, and the leadership comes from here in Franklin County, and so, we couldn't be more proud of where we're from. And I grew up in Rocky Mount. This has been home to me, other than when I was in college and a short stint living in Run Oak. So, this is home. I love it, and, uh, and I'd have to say, my parents started the business, and need to give them credit. My mom died about four or five years ago. She's in heaven. My dad, he's ninety-one, and he's sharp as a tack, doing great. But, um, and ultimately, I thank the Lord and Savior. We've been blessed. Thank you.
We've all had...
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for your... Oh, wait a minute. Hey, sorry. These are little pictures here. I'm going to stand this one here. What did I do? There it is. Okay, you do, that's his pipe. I want to be sure to get that in. Thank you, ladies, for your service. Really do appreciate that. They're so dedicated, they want to get back to work instead of being in here. So, successful business, Uttermost. Uttermost's been in business for fifty years. Fifty years. That's, that's remarkable. And I don't know if you've been out there and seen the plant they've got out there. It's huge, and they're, they're adding on to it and growing all the time. I meant to ask them, they've already left, and I just wonder how many employees they got. I don't know how many they've got. Any of y'all have any, any idea? I wished I'd have thought to ask them that before they left, but anyway, I suspect from looks of that parking lot, it's at least two hundred fifty, three hundred people out there, because that parking lot is full of cars and everything. But anyway, with that being there. All right, the consent agenda. What's your pleasure? Is everything okay on the consent agenda? Everybody happy? All right, I need a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Need a second?
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right. Brian Casella with VDOT. Return, buddy. I appreciate everything you all been doing. Appreciate all the work that you've done on the... Uh, appreciate, uh, all the work that you've done on the roads and trying to get 'em. Uh, went yesterday over to Red Valley and to Novella, and I know all that's been going on. And, uh, I haven't heard anything, uh, this, the words got out in the community. I know what's going on. 'Cause I talked to the mayor over there already. And so, I know the word's gotten out to what, what the plans are. So, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. It's an honor and privilege to be before you all today. Uh, we'll do the VDOT monthly update real quick. Um, fairly brief report, but, um, we're continuing our ordinary maintenance. Uh, we're patching potholes and doing our brush cutting and things along those lines in preparation for some of the, uh, surface treatment and plant mix work that's coming along in the county. Uh, we're working our secondary routes with brush removal. Uh, primary routes, uh, we are actually mowing those. Uh, we're active on two-twenty right now. We're wrapping up, uh, in most areas, our, our primaries, and we'll be going over onto our high-volume secondaries and, and branching out from there. So, mowing's, mowing season. Surface treatment schedule looks to be, uh, intentively in July, so we'll have some surface treatment in the county at that point. And then slurry seal right behind it. Uh, I've got a list of routes there that you can see that have been completed that are actually plant mix routes. So, we had quite a bit of plant mix, which is a great thing for us this year. Many, many miles of plant mix did completed. Uh, over to our land development activity, we're seeing a lot of, um, vatty grants. I know you all were talking about in the broadband. We're having a pretty big influx of permits requested for those things. So, uh, we're actively involved in that and trying to get those pushed out the door. And, uh, a couple of site plan reviews there. And then, uh, lastly, I'll move to page three. We have the, uh, traffic studies. We've got a Route six-nineteen Fannie Cook Road. Uh, request to review the roadway for posted and curb warning signs. So, that came in from a citizen in Snow Creek. So, uh, that concludes our report. We've got an update on the projects there that are active on two-twenty. You'll notice some of the contract work that's going, going on there. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Anybody got any questions for Brian? Uh, okay. Go ahead. Lori?
Oh, I just wanted to, uh, just mention to, uh, my colleagues up here, uh, the Commonwealth Transportation Board hosted its spring public hearings in Roanoke last week. Um, I had the privilege of going in and speaking as supervisor here for Franklin County in its primarily Salem District, um, hearing oriented issues there. Um, but I just wanna tell you, Brian, um, what an honor it is to have our Salem District staffing and you and Lisa and, and everybody else. Um, I was a little surprised at the, uh, lack of people signed up to speak, but the translation to that for me is that people are understanding the challenges that lie ahead for VDOT, and we're all trying to pull in the same direction. And, and I think you all are leading the way, and you're doing it in a way that I think is highly supportive of the localities that you represent. And I just wanted to let you know how proud I was to be a Franklin County resident and being able to speak to the wonderful leadership in Salem.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. And honestly, it's, it was nice for you to be able to be there, and we appreciate you showing up and speaking on behalf of our county, 'cause that helps us to help serve you better. So, um, the fact that you took your time to be there and bring the message from the board and so forth, we appreciate that very much.
Thank you, Brian.
Yes, ma'am. Now, I understand there might be a need to talk about a couple of other things, uh, potentially about the secondary six-year plan that we, um, talked a little bit briefly about last month. Um, Chairman Thompson, I know we've got Route six-fifty-seven Red Valley, uh, consideration for doing approximately six-tenths of a mile on each end to be able to close the loop on that. That will leave a section in the middle that will be unpaved, but, uh, we think we can do that and complete that either late this year or certainly by spring of next year between Red Valley and Novella, the next two. And, and in doing that, uh, by, by segmenting that, we should be able to keep the plan in place while also updating the estimates for the other projects that are, that are in, in the plan. So, um, with that, I offer that to, to the board for consideration.
Do we need to, um, make a vote on that today? Steve?
Public meeting will be June the seventeenth?
You have a public meeting?
Yeah, we'll have a public meeting on June the seventeenth. So, I just figured, uh, we, we came back this month to talk about segmenting that, and if that's the path forward, then we will, we'll march on that. We'll get everything programmed.
Well, I, I wanna thank my, uh, members, uh, my fellow members of the board, because Steve and I talked about that. I mean, Chris and I talked about that, and Steve as well. I think that was probably one of the first times the entire board supported, uh, going ahead with my plan because of, I had put it off for so long. And I know the people in the, especially over on Red Valley Road, when I went over there and I talked to 'em, I had met with them and met with several other people over there, and they were all just delighted of what was gonna, gonna happen. And, uh, I was even told that, uh, in years past, that the reason that that bank had gotten so high, that the property owners wouldn't give any right away, and I was told that that's probably not gonna happen now. That when you go back over there, that that's probably not gonna be a problem. So, just, just to give you, uh, heads up, I didn't, didn't have time to tell you that, 'cause we just went over there yesterday.
No, thank you. Appreciate that. That's good information to have.
I don't feel like you're gonna have any trouble at all on Novella Road.
Okay.
And, uh, with all of that, so with that being said, thank you for everything that you've done. And so, that's just an update to the board on what's going on, and we'll have our public hearing. And I expect, uh, it to be all good, good from that.
Excellent. Okay. Uh, I understand there was some question about golf carts, the ability to have golf carts permitted on, on secondary routes, so, um...
Yes, sir. I've got, I've got, uh, I think you, well, you were here when I, I brought that up. I had gotten several phone calls and a couple of letters, and they were wanting to know if they could, uh, uh, ride a golf cart on the highway in a subdivision. And I told them they need to take that up with the Sheriff's Department. And, and with that, because it was not a licensed vehicle. And I don't know whether they called the sheriff or not. He's here today, and he can speak to that. He's gonna have a, a, a time here in just a minute. Or sheriff, if you wanna speak to that now, but I will... Brian, you go ahead and, and say what you had to say.
Sure. I mean, we have the ability as VDOT to permit localities to, to authorize, uh, golf carts on public streets. Uh, there's some criteria. Basically, it needs to be posted at twenty-five miles per hour. Um, the traffic counts have to be a thousand vehicles or less per day, and there can't be any intersections that have greater than two thousand vehicles per day with a non-signalized intersection. Um, that's really it. Uh, obviously, the operators need to have a valid, uh, operator's permit, so they need to be sixteen or older and have a valid operating permit. But, uh, we can go through that with the county and, and establish an agreement, um, to be able to allow those things, and we could designate routes. So, that is an option if the county so chooses.
Does it have to be, is there a sign posted that there are golf carts or ATVs out there?
I'm not so sure about that. Um, I know when we have, like, golf courses and we have crossings, those are signs that we do have posted. And, um, like, in those kind of communities, I think you can have thirty-five miles per hour. You can have a perpendicular crossing, um, but at twenty-five, you're allowed to travel, you know, longitudinal with the, parallel with the traffic.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Was there anything else, Steve? Speed limits? Talk about speed limits, the locality's ability to influence speed limits. So, um, back in twenty-four, January twenty-four, there was a House Bill ten-seventy-one that introduced, uh, the ability for localities to change speed limits. A couple of things about that. Uh, the roadway needs to be posted at twenty-five miles per hour. That gives the locality the ability to drop it to twenty or no less than fifteen. With that, we have some gravel roads in the county, and by statutory, uh, such as, you've got a, a secondary route that's a paved road. If it's not posted, you know, forty-five, thirty-five, what have you, it's statutory fifty-five. For a gravel road, it's statutory thirty-five. We don't post gravel roads at thirty-five. And I understand there was some concern or some inquiry about getting one of the gravel roads to be able to reduce the speed limit. Because it's not posted, it's not eligible to be able to get posted at anything less than, uh, the statutory thirty-five. And we do that for a good reason, because gravel roads, you know, you get these big rainstorms like we had last week, uh, they get ruts in them and things. We don't wanna post that it's thirty-five or that it's safe to drive thirty-five, 'cause you drive what's safe for the condition of the road. So, uh, it may be fifteen. It may be twenty. It may be thirty-five. Um, but for that, those roadways are not eligible for, uh, being able to have the locality go in and change it. But if it's a subdivision street and this, the county so desires and wants to support dropping it to twenty or fifteen, that's something we can consider. Um, it's tough to drive that slow. So, just offer that up. Uh, the cost for posting signage there would be on the county to, to post any, uh, speed limit signs and things. But, um, just wanted to offer that up.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody got any questions for Brian? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff, I don't wanna put you on the spot, 'cause I didn't, we, we didn't tell you that you, that this was gonna come up, but have you got anything, uh, did anybody contact you about any, uh, golf carts or anything on how?
No, sir. I've not heard a word, but I can confirm with what Brian said there, that, uh, those are the requirements, and certainly it's based upon the ordinance, as I understand it, from the county or locality, for me, it's certainly attached to be the speed limit, as he indicated, twenty-five. Another thing a lot of folks need to look into is, uh, insurance and liability as it relates to that as well.
I think another thing that's important that we're gonna have to emphasize is they have to have a driver's license. They have to have a valid driver's license.
And the understanding too of that speed limit, if the neighborhood or whatever subdivision were to incur, that they would allow that, certainly would have to be the regulation of a posted speed limit at twenty-five.
I gotta, I gotta tell y'all what, uh, my past colleague, Mr. Leland Mitchell, y'all remember him? And, uh, Leland, one time, when we were talking about posting the speed limits on the gravel roads, he said, "We gonna make 'em go fifty-five on the gravel road?" I know we'll forget Leland saying that. I thought that was funny when he said it. Y'all remember Leland? He was, he was something else. Well, thank y'all. Thank you all for that, and I appreciate it. All right, I'm gonna ask, uh, uh, Brian Carter? You'll come and do your financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Get this loaded. So, finance report for, uh, as of April thirtieth, and then there are a couple other various items included in this one, so I know we're just going to tease now so you can get excited about the entire report. So, now, for April thirtieth, we'd be looking at ten months out of the fiscal year, and so that would be about eighty-three percent of our budget for those items that come in monthly. So, looking overall at our revenue, uh, our revenue is meeting overall that benchmark we'd wanna see. What you can tell is on the general property taxes, that is below. That's not necessarily atypical at the end of April, just because of the, the cyclical, uh, nature of property taxes, June fifth and December fifth. And so, uh, but we do have a little more on that later. As far as expenditures, we are below that eighty-three percent benchmark for our departments as they manage their budgets. So, for overall revenues, you can see for April, we, we did have a down month as far as collections go. Uh, sometimes when you get in this time of year, you see the spike in May that, that deals with timing, depends on what business days fall in the month. Uh, sometimes it also depends on when tax bills go out, 'cause the spike is, of course, the real estate property taxes that would be mostly collected in, in the month of May. So, break that down a little further. In categories, uh, you have your general property taxes. You can see year over year, they're, they're relatively close. We, we see the, the collections on a year-to-date basis. So, property taxes are up, uh, about one-point-two million dollars. When you compare year over year, we would anticipate that. Uh, where we're monitoring a little bit is the other local taxes. You can see there, there very, very little difference between where we were last year and where we were this year. And we've mentioned that, so we have a little more detail on what we're seeing on the tightening of those taxes. And, and state revenue is up about one million dollars. Again, sometimes timing, a lot of that is reimbursement-based for us, and so that is tied to salaries of state-supported local positions. So, for real estate tax, uh, we can see April is, is a little down. Uh, it did drop. We were, uh, year over year, we're at five percent growth last month. We're at two percent growth this month. And so, I, we think a contributing factor to that is a delay, and I'll have more information on that in the issuance of the real estate tax bills. So, if you remember, of course, we always push for the acceptance and adoption of the tax rates in the middle of April so that we can get those tax bills out. So, there's a period of collection in April. Most of it is May, which is why you see the spike, and then you'll have some of that in June. So, what we'll likely see, uh, with some of this is you'll probably see a little bit more moderated May, and then you'll see a, a higher spike in June. And that's something, of course, we have a little more detail on in a subsequent slide. So, for personal property, uh, we can see that we've had a couple of good months of collection. It looks a little difficult because of the magnitude of it, uh, but April was a little bit higher. Uh, we were at, at two-point-one percent year over year on that. We're at three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, but biggest thing to notice is we're at a hundred percent of our budget, a hundred-point-eight-five percent. So, through April, we've met our budget on personal property. We've had very good collections for the last couple of months. That's been very good to see. Local sales tax is a little bit different, and so what we have seen over the last three, four months has been a softening in sales tax collections. So, that dropped, uh, to a negative four-point-four percent year-over-year comparison, about almost three-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars. And so, that is, uh, worse. We were at three-point-six percent last month, so about another point-eight percent in a drop year-over-year comparison from a year-to-date. So, from a percent of budget, uh, we're still at eighty-six percent, so we, we feel like, we feel very confident in meeting our current fiscal year budget. Think something that we're gonna be monitoring as staff is next fiscal year, what this looks like. And so, there may be some, um, levels of either mid-year adjustments or consideration, depending on what happens with the economy. There's a lot of uncertainty in the economy right now, depending whether that's business investment or that's local, where either, if you notice, um, credit card debt is at record levels, and people are, are not able to afford certain basic necessities, or they're putting it more on credit cards. That's creating a strain. The other side from a business investment is just the uncertainty in certain levels, especially when you look at federal policy changes that are implemented and trickling down. So, all of those have an impact. The state as well is seeing a reduction in sales tax growth, uh, and some softening in some areas. I have a little bit more on that, on some areas that the, that the governor has mentioned in his, uh, assigned budget. But this number of our local monthly taxes is the most significant to our local budget. This is seven, eight million dollars of our overall one-hundred-and-twenty-million-dollar general fund budget, so it's a very statistically significant number. Meals taxed less so, but it is, uh, a significant number, about one, one and a half million. And so, that's also down. That's about one-point-three percent off for year-over-year. Now, that only equates to about seventeen thousand dollars. A little worse than last month, we were about one percent off for March revenues. So, as we look at April, we, we've had a little bit of a change, not significant. Still eighty-five percent of budget, still expect to meet budget for the end of the fiscal year, but monitoring that as well, meals especially, and your transient occupancy. As you can tell with the prior, uh, historical years, that tends to be, of course, more, uh, collections in the summer months. And so, we, you, we would anticipate seeing that trend for May and June for the rest of this fiscal year. Occupancy, same way. You see the uptick as you get to the summer months, and so that one is actually an increase over last month, um, for, slightly, but a little bit. And so, uh, but very, very tight. So, still about eighty-one, eighty-two percent of the budget. That's okay, because we anticipate May and June to drive those collections. So, we anticipate meeting budget in, in this revenue. Okay? So, expenditures, you see an uptick for April. What that appears to be is a timing payment. Looks like a true-up on the, uh, transfer that we fund the school system with. So, that is a cash-based transfer as they receive reimbursement from state or federal sources. Sometimes we need to transfer less from local money. Sometimes it's more. It was a little bit higher this month. That seems to be mostly contributing for the overall increase. No other significant one-line items that are really driving that, uh, that increase in expenditures. So, likely we'll see that fluctuate when we look at May and June. Categorically, across our other expenditures, uh, pretty much even or a little bit above, we would anticipate that with inflationary pressures a- as we look every year, as we consider our budgetary needs. Drilling down a little more, you continue to see the, the increase year-over-year in our social services and our CSA programs, and don't anticipate that to decrease. our social services and our CSA programs, and don't anticipate that to decrease at this time. Certainly a lot of need out there. Some of that will be driven, could possibly be driven by changes at the federal level, but none of that has really been decided and trickled down at this point. Fund balance and reserves, there really is no change to this item. From last month, you're still at nineteen and a half million dollars after we take out our twenty percent policy minimum for unassigned fund balance. So those numbers really are unchanged. One note on the budget stabilization of a million dollars. We did dedicate as part of our budget, budget adoption, seven hundred and fifty thousand for capital for next fiscal year for the CIP. So the remaining balance of that, while we haven't transferred that because we're not in July yet, the remaining balance is seven, two hundred and fifty thousand. That's seven fifty will be taken out in July. If you looked at the balance today, it would still show a million dollars. And so eight hundred and fifty thousand in the capital reserve that, that we maintain. So economic and state budget update. So we did see a, a reduction, still an increase, but it was the lowest that we've had since February of twenty twenty-one, year-over-year of two point three percent in our CPI inflation in April. And so core inflation, when you take out food and energy, still increased two point eight percent. A lot of that is still being driven by what's called shelter prices, but basically housing. And we're seeing that in our county still. So we had our, of course, our reassessment for twenty twenty-four. We're, we're still seeing sales prices increase above those levels. And so that, of course, is an indication as well of what that may do for LCI as we look at next year's budget, that, that will have an impact because we're still seeing home prices escalate. And that, that's a nationwide phenomenon. That's why you see it in the nationwide data. Unemployment rate was unchanged at four point two percent. Federal Reserve, they left the rates unchanged at their May meeting. Back to that uncertainty with the national economy and what policy implications may do, taking a very cautious approach. So their rate is still four point two five to four and a half percent benchmark rate. The next open market committee is scheduled for June seventeenth and eighteenth. The, the anticipation is there will be some further rate reductions this calendar year. The pause is likely just to, to gauge the impact on the economy. But keep in mind that, of course, our interest and earnings are tied to that rate. And so as that goes down, that impacts the earnings on our budget, which either must be made up by other revenue sources or must be made up by expenditure reductions as we adjust for that. So we did have a signed budget by Governor Youngkin, and so it, you made a couple of line-item vetoes. There were some items that he did amend, but for the overall, the General Assembly budget that was sent back to him was unchanged. The, the biggest impact to localities was the, the school cap funding, the, the school support cap. That was eliminated essentially. So that's more money for our local school system. That's good for us. We're certainly glad to see that. And so that, that is one of the major things that survived. The other major adjustment that he made was to reduce what was mostly capital projects and to set aside a reserve to cushion against anticipated reductions at the federal level, whether that's labor or whether that's funding. And so that, that was about nine hundred million dollars in reductions and capital. So the anticipation would likely be to, once that is settled a little more at the federal level, they might reinstitute some of those funds. Okay. So pivoting a little bit from the normal report. So I know we've, you've probably had phone calls or, or received emails or just comments about, "Where's my tax bill?" And so we're aware. The, the real estate tax bills are a little later this year than, than historically. So we did implement a new reassessment, well reassessment, a new assessment software for real estate taxes this year. That's the first replacement in seventeen years. So when you have a change of that magnitude, it's going to take some time. There's anticipated changes that are going to happen in technology. With that, it more, you know, more nuanced as far as works with Windows. It's not the old, what I call the DOS space, the old AS four hundred system. So what has happened is as the Commissioner of Revenue's Office and county staff were navigating the new software, what happens is that software creates the file that imports into the billing system, while there have been issues importing into the billing system. And so the Commissioner's Office has been working diligently to prepare that, but that file's necessarily, necessary in order for the treasurer to actually submit the bills, generate them, and get them to the third-party printer. So as of this morning, the, the Commissioner's Office is working on that. And so hopefully that will be soon, this, this week, today, tomorrow would be probably ideal. And so assuming that, we would be able to, to have bills hopefully issued by either the end of the week or the first of next week. By, by code, wanted to bring this up. So the Code of Virginia, section fifty-eight point one dash thirty-nine twelve, requires tax bills sent to be no later than fourteen days prior to the due date. So for us, that would be May twenty-second with a June fifth due date. It's run realistic, I think, at this point that those bills will be issued by Thursday. And so what staff, of course, is prepared to do is, is help assist the board in any way if the board wishes to extend the due date, knowing that by code, we probably aren't going to meet it, so we're going to have to extend it regardless. I think one thing to note on that, a couple of things that for the general public and just reminder for the board is that the, as soon as that file is uploaded, the ability to pay online is immediate. You don't have to wait for the bill, you know, the printer to process. The other thing is citizens are always able to prepay. Since we're not in a reassessment year and there was no changes to the real estate tax rate, short of if they've had an, a, a, an adjustment to their property or in addition, something like that that would change, realistically, their tax bill's going to be the same. So they're certainly welcome to come and prepay. Once the bills are issued, that will be applied to the new invoice. So that, that's an option as well. If citizens are going to be out of town or they would like to pay, they're getting nervous about that, that is certainly an option. That prepay option is available all year long to, towards our citizens. So for, for further discussion, depending on how we do, what staff did, this is a sample motion, certainly not trying to lead the board. It's up for discussion how you would like to do. What staff looked at is if we could process bills on Friday, that would be May twenty-third, allow roughly thirty days. That would be June twenty-third instead of the normal June fifth due date. Certainly a possible motion for the board to consider if we'd like to allow more time. If the board has differences on dates, certainly can discuss the calendar. But what we would need either at this meeting or Thursday is a vote to, to extend that due date so that the treasurer can, can make those adjustments and, and move forward.
All right. What's the pleasure of the board? You, I don't think we need to talk this over. They worked as hard as they've done, and the board is the one that told them that they wanted to go to, to twice a year thing. So I'll entertain a motion to extend this to the twenty-fifth, uh, June the twenty-third, or if you've got another date in mind. Ladies, I see both the Commissioner and the Treasurer back there. Is this, I'm sure y'all had input on this. Is this acceptable and agreeable and doable? They both shaking their heads up.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we extend the payment due date for the first half of twenty twenty-five on real estate taxes until June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five.
I need a second?
Second.
I already got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, you do a roll call vote on this, please.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
Ryan? Thank you. We will, of course, notify that and post the notices, of course, on county webpage, all of those items as well, normal, normal mediums. Okay, so a couple of things coming up for our next meeting, wanted to, to prime a little bit for this report. We have a couple of things coming for you just next meeting. And so one of them is going to be the formality of the appropriation resolution. So the board adopted the budget. We now have the ability to take those and put it in, in a resolution with final numbers. And so that will likely be a consent agenda item. It really is just the formality of appropriating the funds from the adopted budget. And so now that the state budget is finalized, there are no major curveballs thrown our way. We feel confident we can bring that to you for that June meeting. So you will see that. Of course, if there are any questions, always feel free to reach out to staff. We will be looking, whether that's June, possibly July, for additional appropriations. If you remember, by code, we are required to hold a public hearing for any appropriation over one percent of the adopted budget. This would really be appropriation for the current fiscal year budget. There are several grants that we have received that exceed that one percent. One of them, of course, being you just had a broadband authority meeting is the Zitele project. That's never been appropriated. That's, that's significant body dollars. There's some other grants for various county projects that we'll bring to you in that meeting. But because it's required by code, we will have that meeting. It'll be in your public hearings just so we could, whether it's June or July, there's no major rush for this appropriation. But we didn't want you to see a public hearing, meeting, and, and be surprised by it in that sense. So normal routine business, we're required to do it. The board's already approved all of these grant funds. It's just a matter of getting to that step of appropriating now that we're ready to spend. There will be a request for consideration of school carryover and a school bonus. So in the, the state budget that the governor ultimately signed, there was a couple of bonuses between school system and between local, local-supported state employees. So for public school systems, there was a one thousand dollar bonus approved for state funding for SOQ positions. And so, of course, that is only SOQ position. So in order to offer bonuses of that nature to all employees of the school system, we need to, to find that local money. And so there will likely be a request of the county board to consider that. And so that's something staff is working with school system, and we'll bring that forward, not for today. We will have a similar situation on the county side, but it's a little bit different. And so for the county, for local, state-supported local employees, it was one and a half percent of the salary, not a flat bonus. And so we're still gathering numbers that most of where that's going to impact is the Compensation Board for our constitutional officers and our Department of Social Services. So we're gathering the numbers and the assessments on that because, of course, that's a partial reimbursement. If the board wanted to do that for all employees, of course, staff will be ready to provide you with what that net cost would be if we wanted to provide that bonus. And so the other item is capital financing work session. And so we, of course, in the adopted CIP, we have major capital projects. And so CTE being one of them, of course. But also, we've talked about a nine-one-one center, talked about public safety, talked about a couple of items. And so it'd be a good time for us to get into the summer outside of budget and, and refresh on financial planning, capital financing. And so we've presented, Davenport was with us last year, I believe, November. And so, of course, Mr. Rose is here again today. But they provided some information on interim financing, some things of that nature, what that would look like. And so want to get back and create a little more discussion, put together a little bit more formal plan and what that looks like over the summer and continue that process forward. The other thing we want to talk about for financing is fire apparatus. And so I think there are a couple of options that Chief Fowler, of course, Mr. Sandy, myself, Mr. Whitlow have been working on as far as do we look at leases, paying off the current leases. Right now, what's being happened is grant money, which is called aid to localities, is being used to pay those leases. That money then is tied up and can't be used for other things, which is basically equipment replacement or other needs in our Public Safety Department. There's a couple of options we can do. We've now received the insurance check for the Boons Mill Tanker that was totaled of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that will supplement the account and the balance. So we want to walk through the board on the scenario of capital planning for, for that heavy equipment area, what that looks like, what replacement schedule may be as we consider, really the, the two that, that are still up are the Boons Mill and Henry apparatus. And so, but ultimately, we'll have a plan presented for those items as well. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, thank you. That's the finance report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody got any questions for Ryan? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. I think what we'll do, I was asked, try to keep a tight schedule. We need to try to get into closed session by three, uh, four-thirty because we've got some people here. Mr. Rose is one that's gonna tell us how we're gonna finance everything. So I think if you need to have a break, a personal break, just go ahead and take it. Come on back and, but we're gonna keep the meeting going if that's okay with everybody. All right, I'm gonna, Chris, if you will, as a introduction into what's going on, your other matters, other matters by supervisors, your matters for later on, we'll probably have to put them back, put them back in after we come back. Because as soon as we get through here with this, this meeting here, we'll need to go back to a closed session. So Chris?
No problem, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good to be with you here this afternoon. And of course, on the item agenda today is some updates on the property option of the former Modjocraft property there at two sixty Weaver Street and one seventy-five Industrial Avenue. And before I start, I'd like to recognize certainly the mayor of Rocky Mountain, Mr. Perdue is here, and Mr. Wood, our town manager, Mr. Clements, good to see you from the council. And I thank Mr. Worley from the school board and the superintendent here, and as mentioned, Mr. Rose, several other folks today. I know that have all had an interest in the property and, and the proposed uses of the property. And Mr. Chairman, I know with the recent passing, certainly our condolences of, of your mother, the correspondence that, that, of course, the town of Rocky Mountain chaired with us, some of their concerns today. And I think we can provide some information to the town today and to the community that speaks to some of those concerns, but then also give an update to kind of where we are with, with, with the property. So just a quick review, the board of supervisors, you all will recall, put an option with agreement with Champion Homes back on February the eighteenth for the potential purchase of the Modjocraft property. And this was an opportunity that really circled back from a priority planning session with the board back in the fall, given the fact that a new CTE center, the estimates on the property of the campus of the high school was anywhere from seventy-five million plus, potentially now maybe eighty, eighty-five million. And so that's a very, very strong number for any project. And so it was the desire, I think, of the board and the school board. How can we get something accomplished there, primarily for Career Technical Education Center, but then also our infrastructure projects, the need for a new nine-one-one center. I see our sheriff with us today, but then also I see our chief, Fire EMS chief, Public Safety Director here today for the Public Safety Administrative Offices. And so the property did circle back around as an opportunity for us. And Champion Homes has been very gracious in terms of working with the county. They've been very specific, not necessarily looking to put that property on the market to sell to others, but specifically encouraged and really enthused by the opportunity for, more specifically, the Career Technical Education Center. And of course, we've had some ongoing discussions now since February with, with the town regarding the zoning, the appropriate zoning on the property and how we can work through that. And, and we're going to talk a little bit about that today, maybe some of the concerns. And so as for where we are today, some do-doing, the environmental assessments certainly are complete on the property. There's been some conceptual site and facilities planning that was, and I'll walk you through some of this from a few years ago. A lot, a lot of that needs to be updated, but it's still relatable, if you will, for, for a visual purpose. Since that time, the school, Dr. Sears has worked, and, and Mr. Bumgardner, Director of CTE is here on the CTE Committee on some facility programming. And then we've had ongoing conversations with David Rose, who's in the audience today, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. And we may ask them to speak a little bit as to the facility programming from the schools, a little bit about the financing from Mr. Rose. And then we'll circle back and maybe talk about possible next steps concerning zoning. So if you will, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I can walk you through this really quickly. You can see here two properties, again, one that fronts on Weaver Street, that's about seventeen point nine acres. So, and then, of course, twenty-one point seven acres on the backside, which fronts on Industrial Avenue. Of course, staff and, of course, the county's intentions, certainly, this property has been vacant for many years now, really off the market, if you will, not necessarily doing the taxpayers significant good in terms of potential economic development activity. So there's an opportunity there on that twenty-one point seven acres to create an industrial pad, whether a pad is graded or whether the property could be sold potentially to, whether it's an expanding existing business here in the county, or as well as a new potential industrial prospect to possibly land, if you will, on that particular site, but then also repurpose the one hundred and ninety thousand square feet, if you will, for career and technical education. And so I'm going to walk you through this a little bit. Here was some preliminary concepts years ago. I know there was some concern shared regarding maybe the traffic, maybe some concerns regarding safety and the segregation of uses. And so this is a busy slide here, but some of the preliminary planning that, that, that was done early on conceptually is really to segregate and isolate the uses whereby the nine-one-one dispatch center and the Public Safety Administrative Offices could be housed specifically in the office space there, if you're familiar with the Modjocraft property. That office space is separated by a firewall, if you will, separating the industrial portion of the building with the office portion of the building. It lends itself very nicely for adaptive reuse. You can see the two parking areas there completely separated, if you will, from the proposed Career Technical Education Facility. career technical education facility. That would have a separate bus entrance and keep the separation of the secondary ed students, which I would, which I'll add, it was mentioned a concern of children and so forth. These were our young adults. The intention of the school system is for career technical education for high school students and not necessarily any other age groups. There was some early on discussion maybe of early childhood education, and I think Dr. Sears is gonna talk about that momentarily. That is not planned for the property. Again, this was a conceptual idea from a few years ago. So again, holistically, it's primarily for career technical education of young adult high school students to complement other uses within the industrial park. We've used the example, as shared back in February, and a potential opportunity, the career technical education facility for Henry County and Martinsville City Schools is located in the Patriot Center Industrial Park there in Henry County. It's a great facility. And it's there certainly to complement the industries within that industrial park for workforce training and education. And as we know, workforce needs are changing every day. We live in a fast-paced environment, a lot of new manufacturing needs, advanced manufacturing, mechatronics, robotics, that lends itself more for industrial space with high ceilings and so forth. And I'll walk the board through that a little bit. Again, this is some conceptual spaces there. It lends itself nice because basically the building is a shell that can be divided in many different spaces. It's very flexible. Years from now, if the project moves forward, a decade, two decades from now, maybe advanced manufacturing, maybe there's something else in the workforce need. So it really, the, the beauty of the project and, and as shared with representatives of the manufacturing engineering technology center there, the CTE at Patrick and Henry there at the Patriot Center is very similar, and it, it's quite impressive. Here are just some concept, conceptual pictures there of some STEM classrooms. You can see that flexible area that, that lends itself well to building flexible space, classroom space for industry, as well as automotive and HVAC. And so that's a good segue, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dr. Sears is here to speak, I think, to the next set of slides. These slides were put together these next rounds. So if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, if it's your pleasure, maybe Dr. Sears could come forward and speak a little bit more to some of the school needs. And I think Mr. Bumgarner, Director of Career Technical Education's with him today, and you may need this, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Superintendent, Dr. Sears, I've called you multiple names today.
Yeah. You'll answer any, right?
Mr. Whitlow, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, board members, thank you for inviting us here to speak today. Just a quick review, this information has been presented publicly at school board meetings and at the joint meeting, but these are some numbers of CTE enrollment requests that we've had. And as you can see, there are a lot of students wanting CTE courses that cannot get in those courses. There are a number of reasons for that. We only have a certain amount of slots. But even more importantly to this possible project is that the classroom space we have is not enough to allow us to maximize our enrollment numbers in many of our programs, especially with the building trades programs. OSHA guidelines would allow us to have up to 20 if we meet the square footage requirement, and Mr. Bumgarner could speak more specifically to this. But as of right now, we can only enroll 16 students in those classes. So if we have a, one teacher teaching six courses and we're denying four students in each of those classes the opportunity to take them, you, you can do the math, but that's 24 students a year per program that can't currently get in because of space limitations. And it is an ongoing issue when you have numbers this high, and I've worked in a lot of school divisions and I've never, and CTE is popular everywhere, but it seems to be more popular here than any place I've worked previously. And we really want to do all we can to make sure our students have the maximum amount of opportunities to take these type of classes. This is some more enrollment numbers. You can see the, the number of students who requested versus the number of students who are enrolled in each of those programs. And like I said, I won't go through and read the numbers. We've discussed them in detail at the joint meeting, but we're certainly willing and available to answer any questions that you may have, yes.
Dr. Sears, can you walk me through what it looks like? Go to your previous slide, please. So number of students, classes requested, forty, 4,773. What does that look like for a student that wants to get into this class and is not accepted? What is, what is the normal go-to for them after that?
The number of CTE classes requested is the students request up to three classes. So they, or they request their first, second, third choice. So that's the number of CTE courses that were either somebody's first, second, or third choice. And in many cases, the CTE classes were their first, second, and third choice. They wanted to get into some type of program. Ideally, students would be able to get in at least one of the courses, but that is not always the case, especially for underclassmen. And if they cannot get into a program because of space limitations or because the classes are full, then we would work with them through counseling to identify other classes where they may have an interest, possibly an art class or a music class, until, you know, they move higher on the priority list for a, a CTE course. And Mr. Bumgarner can add to that if he would like.
So, but if we had, if we were able to facilitate all those, those kids' requests, what would that look like for your other cour-, your other classes and courses at the school?
Given these numbers, we're not gonna, we would not be able to facilitate all of these requests. We're gonna facilitate many more requests for CTE courses with the addition of some additional programs and been able to maximize the slots. But, you know, based on the popularity of CTE courses, there would be no way we could ever develop a program that would allow 4,300 sections of CTE courses, or 4,700 sections of CTE courses. That would just be an astronomical-sized CTE program.
Thank you.
I got a question, Dr. Sears, on this. Say the, the number, people that wants to go to the CTE program and what the numbers are, the 4,000 numbers. It's not based on they can just, they want to go. They have to qualify to get into CTE, don't they?
Yes, that is correct, Mr. Chairman.
And some of those qualifications are what grades or, I know space available, but forget the space, but I'm talking about just because I say I want to be in auto, that doesn't necessarily mean I'm gonna get to get into auto mechanics.
That's correct. There, I will let Mr. Bumgarner address that because he deals with this every day, and he could touch on what the prerequisite requirements are for some of the programs.
And Dr. Sears, while you're coming up, Mr. Bumgarner, also, under the SOQs, every graduating student has to have a CTE accreditation piece, correct?
For a standard diploma, that is correct, yes.
Okay.
Thank you for your question. To answer your question about the students that are enrolling in the class as far as their qualifications go, we do have some classes, especially our upper-level classes, that have more limited enrollments, that have qualification process to get in. Most of our entry-level trade classes, most of our entry-level CTE classes are open enrollment for the school. And then as they go into the higher programs, that's when we can start to have that kind of application process, or qualification process is a better way to put it. Our trade and industry group is, is, is a, is a good one because we're starting that next year, that they have, have those, a certain grade requirement as well as having a couple of certifications that they've had to have earned in their level-one classes in order to get into their level-two classes and complete that sequence.
Thank you. One other question. How have y'all addressed the transportation from getting from the high school to the, the CTE building?
The proposed CTE building? That, that's a later slide, if you'll, if you'll just allow me to cover it a little later. I, I can pull that out, yeah. Yes, sir. So just a few slides of our enrollment numbers, and we've already discussed some of these, you know, just issues and concerns with our current facilities, our safety and security issues with West Campus. It still makes me cringe every time I'm driving through Rocky Mount during a class change, and we have anywhere from, what, 250, 300 kids walking across that road? And it, it's just really a, a security nightmare. The lack of classroom space for bookwork. We have, for example, the masonry lab, there is just lab space. So when they need to, to crack open the books and do some of the math and things that are involved, there's really no classroom space for that. Lab space doesn't meet the OSHA guidelines for maximizing class sizes, which we discussed while ago. We're, we're losing dozens of kids every year to every program just because we don't have adequate classroom space to maximize enrollment in those courses. They're currently scattered across campus and off-campus sites. Our HVAC program is at an off, is currently at an off-campus site, so we already run a bus there to take the, those students to that site. And there's no flexible space to expand programs and incorporate new programs into our CTE offerings. If we're going to try to bring something new in, we would have to figure out where can we give up a classroom somewhere on campus to make that happen, and there really isn't the opportunity to do that. You know, it, if the new CTE center becomes a reality, there would be some classes that would remain on the Franklin County High School campus. The early childhood education class, Mr. Bumgarner and I met last week. It would not make sense to put preschool students in the middle of an industrial center. And we have a great facility there. They've already got a pre-K playground set up on the high school grounds. So that would be a program that we would want to keep at the high school. Plus, some of the students who are enrolled in that program are the children of faculty and staff members at the high school, so it would make sense keeping them down close by where their parents work. And then some of the business courses, we would not want to move all the business classes there, especially introductory classes where, you know, students would maybe take that and then have three core subjects down there. There's no point in driving those students up to the CTE center for, for some of the classes that don't need lab space, that could be handled in a regular classroom. Some of the courses that we would want to move to the new facility, of course, ag classes, especially those with the power systems programs, culinary arts, we would hope to have the CTE center with a commercial kitchen. So our, our students and faculty do a great job now catering events, but they're doing it on basically what you, the type of kitchen you have in your home, and it takes a long time to mass-produce food when you're cooking on a, a regular cook stove. Auto collision repair, automotive servicing, HVAC plumbing, carpentry, masonry, electricity, criminal justice, television production. Some of the business courses would be moved to the new center, health occupations classes. And also, this would be something we hope to expand, but the technology education with robotics and drafting and cybersecurity, some of those we have. But with robotics, we would like to expand that into a, a mechatronics program or advanced manufacturing program. Some of the new courses that we would like to explore bringing in, of course, would be cosmetology, firefighting, the advanced manufacturing, EMT and paramedics, pharmacy tech, heavy equipment operation. The general assembly relaxed some of the guidelines this year about different types of certification classes and the age of students to get those certifications. I know Patrick County is working on a heavy equipment operators program now, and the Patrick and Henry Community College, I think, is providing those classes for them. Previously, students had to be a high school graduate or at least 18 to get those programs. And I don't know all the details yet, but I do know they have relaxed some of the age requirements. So I think there's going to be the opportunity to provide more of those type certifications, even though they might not count for a high school credit, they would still allow our students to earn employment certifications that would allow them to make a pretty good salary right out of high school. And something we've been kicking around to address the transportation concerns and also to make the process run more smoothly for our students is the possibility of maybe having a math, science, social studies, and English teacher also based at the CTE center. And that way, students who are taking two programs or students who may, a, a lot of the higher-level courses are double-blocked, so let's say they're in a, a course first and second that's double-blocked, and they have an internship where they leave early. Well, rather than having to, that student travel back to the school and then leave for the internship, it would be possible that they may take their math class there and then leave directly from there. You know, I don't know how all that will work yet, but I, I do know that it's possible and, you know, it's something we're toying with, the possibility of having core subject classes at the site to make it easier. Or if a student is taking two different CTE courses and they need to be their first period and third period, does it really make sense to try, transport them back to the school for second and then back up to CTE, or for, CTE center for third? May not, the numbers may not justify putting core subject teachers up there. It may be that we just do a virtual lab so students can participate in a virtual course in between their CTE classes. There, there are a lot of possibilities and, and, you know, we, we plan to be flexible and make out a, a schedule and programming that works best for the students who are in those programs. And then the transportation plan. All students would first report to the main campus of the high school to be transported to the new CTE center. This is how it works for the Franklin Center currently. We estimate that it would take six or seven buses to get the students from, to the CTE center for first block. And then since some of the courses are double-blocked, and, and if we can move some of the core classes to the CTE center, we estimate that the buses traveling between classes would probably be three or four buses in between each classes. And then all students will be transported back at the end of the day for dismissal, so we wouldn't be trying to blend the dismissal from the CTE center and the high school and the middle school at the same time. We would schedule it so that they were back on the high school campus before the high school was dismissed.
What about meal breaks? You're not gonna put a cafeteria over there?
No, we would not put a cafeteria over there. We would probably have meals delivered for the students who, who were remaining up there during that time. Ideally, if they're going back to campus, they could eat the meal, or if they were leaving campus to come for an afternoon class, they would eat on campus. But if we do have some students there during the crossover, we would have meals delivered to them.
Okay.
And I think that, that is it for our presentation. Are there any more questions?
Anyone else got any more questions? Don't think so.
Okay.
Don't see no head shake. Thank you all very much.
Mr. Chairman, I guess next, David Rose is here with Davenport and Company Financial Advisors. And as Dave comes forward, I just add regarding the, the traffic and, and so forth, as I know, that was a, a noted concern and so forth. I, I hope that's been addressed some by the school system. We certainly see minimal traffic from public safety offices and E911 communications. I think far fewer employees as part of the CTE 911 center and public safety offices as would have previously been at the Modjocraft site. So we, we're fairly confident in that, but just to address that. And then also, we, we know there may be other items of concern as we go through the process to address and depending on, you know, as we go through steps forward, we can provide further updates, you know, to those various concerns and speak to those. But we, we certainly want to speak to as many of those as we could today. One of those specifically is the financing of the project, and, and I know this board and previous boards, this is a project that's been in the works now for some time. The specific project on the campus, as we learned, if it was a new build on the campus of the high school, potentially 75, 80 million dollars, as I mentioned earlier. Some preliminary estimates several years ago on the rehab, far more cost-effective on the rehab of the Modjocraft site. And that's really that primary, I think, reason that this is such an important project to everyone, both to the taxpayer, but, but certainly the school system and, and our county citizens. And so Mr. Rose is here to speak to a little bit of that. I think the first phase is the acquisition of the property and some engineering of the property. We've talked about interim financing with the board back in November and previous times with our board, where we would see no impact, if you will, on current tax rates with our current debt service potentially in the interim financing. I don't want to specifically speak to that or be quoted for that, Mr. Donovan. I would rather our financial advisor take that one. But long-term, we know a large renovation like this, but we don't necessarily know the price of that renovation. Is it 30 million? Is it 40 million? What we can confidently say, it's not 80 million. And so that being said, the long-term financing of the project would not really take place for another couple of years. This is an interim period of property acquisition, engineering, and all the due diligence work there. So I think Mr. Rose can paint that picture for the board at this point. So, and I have the, I have the, you want me to just advance the slides for you? All right.
That way I know I have to move quickly.
Okay. Yeah, that's right. That's right.
Well, I appreciate it. I know the, the chairman has stepped out for a moment, but I want to make sure I acknowledge... I know the, the chairman has stepped out for a moment, but I want to make sure I acknowledge he was delighted to see your chairman back. And again, appreciate being here. I'm going to be fairly brief today, just have a few slides, and I think it's the old saying, if you're, if you're explaining, you're losing, and we don't have much explaining to do, really. In fact, the last time I was here, I had indicated that of the three credit ratings we have, we had been upgraded. And so, since then, and now I'm back, we have another upgrade. So we have actually seen two of the three national rating agencies upgrade Franklin County in just literally the last eight or, eight or so months. So the reason they have done that is because right there, the county is in excellent financial standing. Brian presents on a monthly basis. I'm here quite a bit. And again, what you do so well is you recognize those trends, you're anticipating, you're in front of a lot of those things, and that's why, again, we see another solid year, even though, again, you still have about four or five weeks to go. Mr. Chairman, you walked out. I said I was delighted to see you back, and I just wanted to make that comment to you in person, even though I told that to the board about 30 seconds ago. So good to see.
Thank you, sir. I'm glad you can see me back.
It is good to be back. And I'm not going to be long, I promise. So a couple of things as to why we are literally a notch away from that coveted AAA rating, which is the highest any local government can get. And that's because that third bullet point, we have a very substantial unassigned fund balance. That's our rainy day fund. Over the years, we've improved on that. I think the important thing for the citizens is that while we have a good amount of money sitting in that account, that earns an interest rate that is above our cost of money when we do borrow. And that money is, those interest dollars go back into the general fund and help keep down the pressure on the tax rate. So for the citizens' purposes, that is money that's not just sitting there idly, to the contrary, and it also helps us get a better credit rating. And that leads me into the next bullet point, and that is, we are planning with your blessing to do roughly about a $20 million interim financing, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that specifically if you have me back next month. But I can tell you, as, as Brian indicated, and we'll underscore this, we can do all of that without having to ask for any additional dollars from the general fund because of the way the planning has occurred. And when I say no additional dollars, that means no impact on, let's say, the real estate rate or anything of a comparable nature. Again, for the citizens' purposes, you all know this, every time I present capital strategies, we always equate that to equivalent penny impact if it were all put on real estate. Not that we're suggesting that, but it's a way to sort of see the relative impact. Okay, next page.
You spoke too soon, David. I paced too fast.
Next page, okay. So just simply put, again, you've seen the credit rating upgrades. There are only three national rating agencies, Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's, and Fitch. And so, again, when we first started, it was down in the A-plus level, and now we're basically three notches above that, so very, very strong. Next one, that unassigned fund balance I talked about, you can see where you are. Very, very strong. Your policy is at 20%. You're considerably above that. And again, in this kind of environment, we want to be in that mode because, again, it gives us that flexibility if in case some, some very tough things occur down the road, better to be in a stronger position. All right? So here's the critical page, I think, as it relates to how we will incorporate a $20 million borrowing, if that's what is, is done with your blessing. And what you'll see here is if you look at the dark green in 2025 fiscal year, it's basically slightly under $6 million. That's your debt service that Brian has in there that you're paying now in this fiscal year that's almost over. You'll notice it drops down nicely in '26, '27, and then continues to go down. And that's not by accident, that's been by design. We've set that up so that we can then layer in new debt because, again, the county always has things to do over the years. So that, in effect, tan is what we've estimated would be the new debt service on that interim funding. Now, it looks to be as if we are above that, that critical line to some extent. In reality, we've put in a very substantial cushion when it comes to interest rate. We did a sale this morning for Loudoun County, but a piece of their debt was rated the same as yours, which was, again, 20-year fixed rate. The fixed rate on that was 3.85%. So 20-year fixed rate at under 4% for a rating that would be akin to yours. I can assure you, and Brian, you know this, we'd estimate purposely at the 5% rate. We do it that way, rather come in lower, possible we won't come in lower. But even though in the world of mortgage financing, for those that are fortunate enough to afford a mortgage, it's not at very low rates, relatively speaking. The municipal side, the world that we borrow in, we, the county, we are in a very favorable environment. And so, again, sometimes those markets don't always align, but the hope is that with your blessing, we would move forward. And that's my last slide. Next one, and that is sort of the action items. No action today, just, again, just brief you, as I've done before. Brian alluded to a work session in June, and at that point, we can put a little bit more specificity on the plan of finance. But then, if we're, so be it moving forward, July, August, and then goal is to roughly around Labor Day shortly thereafter, close on a financing. And then, we lock those monies in. As we spend those monies, we either draw down, maybe it's a line of credit, maybe it's a bond anticipation note, whatever makes the most sense. And you'll ultimately know that because you'll be able to decide that. But the upshot is, we will reinvest any of those monies so that we can, again, keep the real costs down and it won't look as nearly as dramatic as we showed on the previous page. So I feel good about this. Happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I first introduced this, though, last spring, if you recall, and I said, as you are ready. So here we are, a spring later, and that's no surprise. So again, I feel like we're, you're moving methodically.
As usual, Mr. Rose, I feel very confident in your expertise and in your advice, and I appreciate what you've done towards Franklin County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Anybody got any questions or comments for Mr. Rose? Everybody shaking their head nose, so everybody must concur with what I said there. You're doing a good job, David, and we appreciate it, but.
Thank you again. Appreciate it, Mr. Thomas.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, as distant summary again, the option agreement that the board put on the property February 18th, those two parcels. Of course, some, some next possible, possible next steps. I know Mr. Rose had shown a previous slide of potential. And just so everyone's clear, that interim financing includes other things, other county needs, including our solid waste collection sites and some, some other things. Of course, as David mentioned, he, he's been working with the county since last year on those things. And whether that be the engineering plans for a, a new build, whether it's the renovation plans for the existing Modjocraft property, certainly the engineering side can be costly. And then to reimburse, if you will, if, if the board wishes to exercise an option on the Modjocraft property at whatever time the board may choose, it's also reimbursing the county for that. Wrapped up then that interim financing, long-term construction financing, again, a project of this magnitude could be a couple of years. And so, in a couple of years, we have, would have gone through another reassessment. In addition, add the LORAM taxes, if you will. We're still waiting to know on those revenues from the, from the pipeline. A lot, no pun, a lot in the pipeline, if you will, potentially sales tax option at the state level for school-related facilities, school construction grants, loans, and so forth. So there's a lot to be seen for the longer-term financing of the project, but I think the point here for the interim financing for property purchase, engineering, certainly, as Mr. Rose demonstrated, not necessarily a financial impact, if you will, to our debt service. So that being said, we've continued to work with the town manager, certainly in his office, and I know the mayor speaking. I had shared some concerns with the council, and it's good to see them here with us today. And I think their comments and feedback initially has been very insightful for us, and I hope today that information from the superintendent regarding traffic impacts and other things, as well as Mr. Rose on financing, address some of those concerns. And again, working with them, we want to be sensitive. We know this is a community project, not just about Franklin County, but Rocky Mount, Franklin County, our citizens, our school board, and it's a big project. And it's a big project for our workforce, it's a big project for our industries, opportunities there, again, on that other parcel for economic development, but also for workforce training. And so, to that end, our staff has been working some with our state offices, specifically on workforce, the Secretary of Labor, the Department of Labor in Virginia, workforce development, others, for potential CTE workforce summit, if you will, both on programming and the needs for CTE training. But it also gives us an opportunity, and we would certainly welcome this. Right now, we have a tentative date set for July 22nd for a possible CTE workforce summit meeting, if you will, likely held. Our economic development staff is putting this together at the Franklin Center, whether that's a morning breakfast or a lunch, if you will, maybe a keynote speaker, if you will, from, from one of the state offices with workforce. But we've talked some with the superintendent's office with the possibility of getting on the yellow wagons and the school buses and taking, taking a trip down to see. I think seeing is believing a lot of times, and actually to see the CTE facility there at the Patriot Center Industrial Park in Henry County, see Patrick and Henry's facility. It is quite impressive. I have toured that facility, and the president of the college, Greg Hodges, has been very gracious to give us that tour. So I think it'd be a good opportunity for us and the town council, the, the school board, as we work through next steps. Again, whether that be a text amendment or a rezone. Currently, the property is owned manufacturing, and so there, there is some discussions. We've had a possible text amendment that would allow a career technical industrial training center in the industrial park, as opposed to a rezone application. But whatever that the town direction may give us, whether it's that text amendment or a rezone application, I think that's one of the next steps. And so, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I hope that was a good overview of kind of where we are and updates. I hope it was beneficial for our town representatives and our school representatives here today. And I would like to thank the superintendent, Mr. Rose, for your work here to provide that information today.
All right, I'd like to thank all of the speakers that's been here today from the schools and everything, and for all the letters that we got from the town. And I want the board, you all got your letters, I want you to be mindful of our partners here in the county with the town, with the schools. And, I mean, we've got some businesses over in the Business Park, Industrial Park, they, they may express, express their feelings too about what's going on, and we need to be mindful of all of those feelings and try to get along and work with everybody. Now, with that being said, we can go forward right now with any kind of emotion, or we can go in closed session, and, but I, I don't think we got to be careful at this point. What we talk about in closed session, our attorney's going to tell us that because it's all out in the public, and even the financing's out in the public now. So we've got to be very mindful and very careful what, what we do back there. So if there's any motions or anything, I, I think for the sake of time, with Mr. Whitlow's other matters, with the attorney's other matters, well, let me ask the attorney, have you got any other matters by the attorney? You don't have anything?
I don't have any.
Okay, so we'll, I figured that's what he was going to say, so that took care of that. And other matters by supervisors, we'll save that until after we come back from going into closed session and taking our break. And so, that, that will take care of that. So with all that being said, do we have any, any motions or anything that you want to talk about, or you want to go back in the back and have our meeting back there and give time to think about it? That might not be a bad idea. And then come back here with any motions, but whatever the board wants to do. Anybody got anything to say?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make just a brief statement for, you know, expediting time. We've been working on this for a long time, and I've been working with our colleagues and you, Mr. Chairman, and my sense is that the board is very, very much ready to move forward and get this, you know, get the property, exercise the option, and then move forward with next steps under the guidance of the county attorney, which is maybe where we would like to do some consultation, if the county attorney feels it's appropriate. But I, you know, I would love to see some action taken, literally, today on the option so that we can move forward proactively. This, this CTE center has been in the pipeline for over 20 to 25 years, and it, that's just unacceptable for the students of Franklin County, for our businesses. And for that reason, we have a tremendous opportunity with the purchase of this property. And the return on investment for this is most understated, and we're going to be saving the taxpayers millions and millions of dollars with this project. And then, on the flip side of that, we're providing our students, our children and our grandchildren, an opportunity to get vocational training in a world now where this is the leading thing kids are going after. It's where the money is. And then our businesses will be, you know, it'll be a reciprocal thing for our businesses to have a skilled workforce. So for that reason, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that the board proceed with exercising the option on this property today.
All right, we got a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'd second.
We got a second on the floor. All right, any open questions? Anybody got any comments or questions before I call for a vote? Madam Clerk, will you read the motion back? It's on the floor, please.
Okay, for clarification, is this something to proceed with purchasing this property?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So.
Motion is to move forward with.
To move forward with purchasing the, the property.
On Weaver Street and Industrial Avenue, yes.
Mr. Chairman, would you add to it that in exercising the option, that you'd authorize the county administrator to sign?
All the necessary documents and papers.
I, I would amend the motion accordingly.
I'd amend that for that.
Thank you, Jim.
Any more questions before I call for the vote? Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right, we're going to go into closed session. Madam Clerk, will you read the proposal for that, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Chairman Thompson?
I'm so excited.
Are we going to, are we going to proceed with the sheriff's permit update that's on the agenda? The sheriff's permit update is next on the agenda? Are we going to do that first?
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that. That won't take us, it won't take him but a minute. Let's do that while he's here, so he don't have to come back. That won't take him but a minute.
No, just very quickly, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Madam Vice Chairman, members of the board, thank you so much. Good seeing you all. Mr. Chairman, I wanted to extend my condolences to your mother. I missed you when I called, but what times I had the privilege of knowing and meeting and talking with her over the years, she was a pleasant, nice lady.
Thank you, sir.
She had a long, wonderful life.
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to update you just a little bit, if I could, very quickly, as it relates to concealed handgun permits. As many of you know, the law states that the clerk of the court shall assess. Shall assess a fee of $10, and that local law enforcement has the, may enforce or assess, assess a fee of up to $35, and the state police may assess a fee of $5 processing fee as well, which gets the permit fee up to $50. This was a process in place that I inherited over 12 years ago and was the process in place prior to that administration. Had not given a lot of consideration to it over the years, other than the fact that we know that. years, other than the fact that we know that gun legislation was a big issue in 2021, and it was certainly a big topic of discussion in the recent presidential race, and again, is surfacing itself as a big topic this year in the gubernatorial race here in the Commonwealth of Virginia for this year. Right to date this year, 2025, we've issued 584 permits. What I'm here to talk about today, a process change that I'm going to be putting in place as of July the 1st. Mr. Jamison brought this topic up for discussion as it related to the fact of the cost for folks that were truly trying to protect themselves from a safety standpoint, it was almost, it would appear to him, and I concur with it, quite an obstacle for a $50 fee, initial application fee, and then a $50 fee for renewal after five-year period. So much so, that over the years that I've been in office, we've tried to put in place, well, have put in place, courses where people could come for safety factors and get their concealed permit certification, which is part of the code section that they must have to get a concealed handgun permit. Depending on where they go, that could be an additional cost of several hundreds of dollars to pay out to be able to get that certification. We drastically reduce that because, again, trying to make it more convenient and easy for them. Having said all that, I've made the decision, as of July the 1st of this year, the office of the sheriff will not be assessing the $35 fee on citizens that come in for a concealed handgun permit, making the permit process $15, the $10 that the court shall impose, and the state police still may continue with the $5, they could waive that as well. I'm not sure what they would entertain or even the thoughts related to that. I say this for the fact because it does affect the county budget very so slightly, it's estimated roughly around $40,000, $42,000 a year of revenue that that fee, the $35 fee does bring into the county, so that would be a change there. But we've been doing it for years, nothing will change as far as the background requirements, the time and effort that we put into that, I just believe, after consideration and having quite a bit of dialogue with Mr. Jamison, concur with him for the fact of where people feel crime is and the safety and those issues, that want to make it as easy as we can for them to be able to obtain that concealed weapon permit if they meet all the other requirements and pass the background check.
Thank you, Sheriff, any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it, Sheriff Olden, your support for the Second Amendment, the training you offer for the county and all, you do a good service, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Jamison.
Anyone else?
Sheriff, I want to say thank you for making this change as well, but also be mindful how quickly things can change with one act of violence, you know, how things happen. I remember after Sandy Hook occurred, we went from doing about 30 or 40 a month to 200 a week. You know, things change, and we need to make, you know, a change with it, just keep us, you know, keep us abreast of, you know, of needs that may arise, you know, with your department, so that they don't go, you know, unnoticed, and, you know, we applaud you for making this change, but we also want to be mindful that, you know, circumstances change with daily occurrences, and if we need to adjust accordingly, keep us abreast of that.
Very much so, and we're very mindful of that, because when we are signing off on that gun concealed weapon permit, we're actually endorsing what the judge is about to sign, so we take that very seriously, and we will continue to do endeavors to make sure that we're giving the best information in regard to each individual that does apply, but you're exactly right.
Sheriff, does this require an action of this board to reduce the fee?
I do not believe so, we had discussion, Mr. Whitlow and Mr. Quinn, the attorney, and I think based upon the language of the code section where it says the sheriff or local law enforcement may, has that leeway, up to $35, less than $35.
Because you're a constitutional officer, and I know that's articulated separately in the state code.
Right.
Thank you.
But I do want to emphasize, we will continue a strong effort of providing firearm safety and continue to allow folks to get that certification, not trying to cut into the private sector that's providing that same service, as Mr. Tatum was just saying, we just want folks to know the responsibility, the right to bear arms and have a concealed weapon permit if you meet all the requirements, but we want to extend the safety factor to it as well.
Mr. Whitlow, can we put some information on the county website to just to make sure that we're helping the sheriff to share that?
We certainly can, Mr. Tatum, that, and the, I guess, the extension, if you will, of the tax collection, this information today, we'll get out, we'll get that out on the website, information, yes, sir.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for your kind words and for job that you and your staff have done.
Thank you so much, y'all have a good evening, have a great Memorial Day weekend.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff.
You too. Madam Clerk? I'm sorry.
I answered anything, it's okay.
Lori.
Lori. Okay, I would move that the Franklin County Board of Supervisors enter into a closed meeting in accordance with Section 2.2-3711, A1 Personnel Discussion of the Appointments to County Boards, Commissions, et cetera, A3 Discussion of the Acquisition of Real Property or the Disposition of Real Property, A5 Discussion Concerning a Perspective Business or Industry or the Expansion of an Existing Business or Industry, A8 Consultation with Legal Counsel Employed or Retained by a Public Body Regarding Specific Legal Matters Requiring the Provision of Legal Advice by Such Counsel, and A29 Discussion of the Terms of a Public Contract of the Code of Virginia as Amended.
Need a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes. Be 75. For us being back there, but we've been busy this evening in trying to get everything caught up. We'll pick up where we left off this afternoon before we went back there. County Administrator, you got anything there that you want to say? Oh, we need to go ahead, Lori.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would move to certify that only such public business matters are awfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session, to which this certification applies, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which this closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which the certification applies.
All right, I got a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Got a second, Madam Clerk, we do a roll call on that.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn is absent for the vote, Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
I'm a yes, Amy, I can vote.
Oh, okay, I didn't know you were on yet. Okay, Supervisor Quinn is here, Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes, I was getting ready to ask, was he on the, did you have him on the mic? We got, for you all that wondered where that voice come from out of the sky, Dan Quinn, that's the supervisor Quinn, he's joining us by the telephone for this session, so that's what that is, he can hear us. He still there, Dan? Maybe he can't hear us.
Yes, I am.
Okay, buddy.
Yep.
All right, all right, Chris, you've got other matters?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a couple housekeeping things, and I'll be brief, because I know the public's waiting tonight for these public hearings, but of course, you may saw some in the media today, and just a shout out to our partners, Patrick and Henry College down, based out of Martinsville, but also operate out of the Franklin Center, as well as Virginia Western Community College and Faram College, great partners. Yesterday, we had a signing ceremony, recently, Patrick and Henry certified their nursing program, their CNA nursing program by the state board to be offered at the Franklin Center and our health lab. Great opportunity for our citizens and workforce, Mr. Carl Klein, who's also a board member with Patrick and Henry, and also is vice president of the Coralian Franklin Memorial, was there. Great opportunities as feeder programs, we have a lot of public safety folks, fire EMS folks here in the audience, and I think it's a great feeder program, CNA, EMT, paramedic, also the Bachelors of Nursing Program at Faram College, so just a great opportunity all the way around, want to thank all the folks over at the Franklin Center specifically in previous work, Brandy Rosser I know did some work, and Stacy Jones over at the Franklin Center, and Carly Foster, and Danny Poe, and others, so a big shout out to everyone, and look for great opportunities and expanded program offerings by Patrick and Henry, Virginia Western, Faram, and Franklin County Adult Education over at the Franklin Center. Big things going on this week, Mr. Chairman, as everyone knows, probably seen in the media today, a lot of good media coverage, shout out to Kevin Tosh, our Director of Tourism, and Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge, who brought the Major League Fishing Tournament for the first time to Smith Mountain Lake. Live 24/7 coverage is ongoing this week on many, many media outlets, so far 51 hours of live stream coverage, there's half a million dollars in prize money out there in live stream views as well, so far 7.2 million social media impressions, so I don't know who tracks all these stats, but it's fairly impressive. Not to be outdone, this Saturday, Fishers of Men is doing a fishing tournament at Philpot Lake, and as I've shared before, I'm ever reminded of Franklin County's natural beauty, our two lakes and the Blue Ridge Parkway. We kick off the United States 250th anniversary coming up next year, there's a Virginia 250 Living History Day at the Blue Ridge Institute this weekend, also on Saturday, upcoming the Punchy Pig USA Cycling Virginia State Championship at Wade Park. I don't know who makes and writes this stuff, Mr. Chairman, who words this, but again, a lot of the opportunities of USA Cycling that we've seen in the past, bringing Franklin County to the national stage, so very, very excited about all of the upcoming events coming on. Speaking of Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge, there is an opportunity for the board members to provide some feedback, Virginia's Blue Ridge is doing an alignment strategy with the Roanoke Regional Partnership in terms of placemaking, economic development, you'll hear Landon Howard say the first date of economic development is tourism and visitors, and so how we can better align those two organizations with their marketing, and so I'll distribute to you all opportunity to go visit and give your feedback coming up. Those are the primary things, Mr. Chairman, and just earlier today, and we'll work, yes, sir, VACO, thank you for the reminder, June 12th, I believe it is, there's the VACO Regional Meeting at the Pennsylvania County Old Dominion Agricultural Complex there in Pennsylvania County. If you have not registered, please contact Amy or Lori in our office, they'll get you registered, and then some other activities today that we'll try to get the information out, I think Mr. Tatum mentioned earlier, regarding the concealed weapon permit reduction at the sheriff's office, of course, the sheriff spoke about earlier, and as well as the extension of the tax deadline later in June as opposed to June 5th. So, Mr. Chairman, those are the primary things that I have by way of updates, I can answer any questions that the board may have.
Anybody got any questions?
I just want to say, Mr. Chairman, I've tuned into the live coverage of the National Fishing Tournament, Major League Fishing, I can't count the times that the commentators have gone to commercial and come back and said, "We are here at beautiful Smith Mountain Lake in beautiful Franklin County," and I just get chills every time I heard it, the kind of coverage that our county is getting, it is incredible, and the feedback from the anglers that are here from all over the country is incredible, so I'm just so proud of our county, and I'm so proud of Kevin Tosh and all of the staff's efforts to get this national recognition, and this tournament will live, excuse me, will be on television, June, July, but you can watch it live, tomorrow and Thursday are the biggest days, Thursday's the big day, the poor little award up to $200,000, so I just wanted to give a big shout out, this is a special time for Franklin County, and I couldn't be more proud.
I was going to, Mike's meeting tomorrow with emergency services, but I think I'm going fishing now.
It's a hard decision.
Chief, you make an announcement, you asked me about, I already made it, but you go ahead, you got something to say to add to it, invite everyone?
I just want to say, it's National EMS Week, we're here to recognize that we've got some EMS providers in the room, so we just want to say thank you to all the EMS providers for everything that you guys are doing. Tomorrow's the last day that we're hosting a luncheon from noon to 1:30 for all EMS providers volunteering career in the county over at Franklin Center, so not just leadership, but any county leaders that want to be there, we encourage you to come, have some fellowship for that hour and a half, and really get a chance to say thank you to the men and women that are in the community for providing our, as you say, a wonderful service in EMS.
Yes, sir. Again, if I'm not there, I'm going fishing. All right, thank you, buddy. All right, other matters by supervisors, anybody got anything, start down there with you, Tim?
No.
I just have a couple brief things, on the Region 10 VACO, District Region 10 Meeting next month, one of the things we're responsible for is to present some legislative priorities, and we certainly, of course, have not worked on our legislative agenda for 2026, but what I could offer up, if you all still are inclined to have me work on that, and that's up to you, I would just say whoever works on it, we need to kind of look at what our legislative priorities were last year and concur, and potentially add to or delete items on there so that we can make a good showing at the Region 10 Meeting. So I would leave it up to discretion, Mr. Chairman, of our colleagues.
We can look at that Thursday.
Okay, all right. The other thing, well, I've already touched on the Commonwealth Transportation Board hearing, I tell you, came out of that with Franklin County was probably, had the most attention of any of our regional colleagues, and it's all on the initiative that we're working on to do and get a study, we've got a study that's been authorized by the federal government for the 122 corridor, but I've seated a more regional group with all three planning districts, myself, Edgar Tuck from Bedford County, and then our staff, Mr. Sandy, Danny, where we are really going to start drilling down on how to deal with the infrastructure pressures and safety and road issues on 122, because they're not really great now, and they're going to get a lot worse with all of the development that's coming and development that's currently in the queue to be here. So I just want to let you all know that we are really going to drill down on that, and we'll be bringing you some reports back as we continue to collaborate with Bedford County and the planning districts. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Dan, you got anything, bud? Mr. Quinn?
Mr. James, you got anything?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I've had several people reach out to me, and I've already spoke to Brandy about this, that the yard, the grass at Henry School has not been touched all year, and I would be willing to bet you it has been a burnt chimney. So we need to get, we need to get on that, how we're going to handle that, and get that taken care of, because it's our responsibility now.
It is.
And Steve, I hate to keep harping on you, but that cell phone deal on that tower, man, we got, I want to see something writing for when that's going to happen, that's been going on for how long? Because when I asked you earlier if we meant this September, I was serious. I want something, commitment on that written out, and I know you guys have been working on it, and it's been difficult getting the staffing, speaking of something that's been going on forever, looking at those staffing reports and seeing Fork Mountain, Snow Creek all the time, I'm ready for something and writing on that, too, and I know you guys are doing what you need to be doing, I know y'all are doing the job, and I believe in what you're doing, but I'd like to see a sense of urgency to it. You know, you can bet tomorrow evening it's going to be tractors on the road, be included, mowing hay, and it's just going to be a busy time of year, I'm ready to see that come to, I'm ready to see Fork Mountain and Snow Creek both made whole, and I'd like, I know we've been talking about it forever, I'm ready to seal the deal, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carter?
I lost my train of thought, Mr. Chairman, briefly as a follow-up to Lori, I've been traveling 220 a lot recently from Rocky Mount to Roanoke and back, and I think as a board, we need to have some discussions about some cleanup along that corridor, and some discussions with VDOT about some upgrades, traffic is terrible through there, and it's more and more, there's wrecks all the time. I also wanted to congratulate the board on our moving forth with the purchase of the Maju Craft Building today, when I got elected, that was one of the things I ran on, was a career and technical education school, and I think it's finally going to come to fruition, and I was reading in the Wall Street Journal, May 8th, high school juniors that attract job offers topping $70,000 a year because of career and tech... job offers topping $70,000 a year because of career and technical school education. Employers dealing with workforce shortages as baby boomers retire." And it went on to talk about how not all students are college material. It's not for all, and a lot of the options for students are in the career and technical fields. But congratulations to all of you all for supporting that project. And that's all I have.
Anyone else? I don't have anything. I already said everything I wanted to say, so all that's done. All right, now, we got some board appointments. We got some board appointments. Anybody got their appointments that they are ready? Okay, Mr. Carter?
I would like to reappoint Mrs. Smith to the Roanoke Regional Partnership. I think her term expires June 30th, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
You okay?
Yes, sir. I guess.
You gonna make that a?
I'll make that a motion.
All right, we need a second on that?
Second.
All right, all in favor, signal five with a C and a. Any opposed? All right, we got any more?
I do, Mr. Chairman, if I may. In a reciprocal fashion, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Mike Carter to the Roanoke Allegheny Regional Commission, term to begin 2026.
Okay, is that Mr. Carter?
The second.
All right, we got a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor, signal five with a C and a. Any opposed, same side?
Sorry?
Got one opposed.
No, no, no.
Dan, who was the second?
No, no, he didn't oppose.
Mike is doing great.
He's got an appointment to make.
For the audience, nobody else wants to do that, that's why Lori and I have to do it.
Well, what I'm getting ready to do, I would echo that. I have two appointments, Mr. Chairman, for CPMT.
I might do it.
I'm not looking at you.
I've got enough to do.
I have two folks that we do need seriously to reappoint, and I think they're willing to continue serving Mr. Carter, correct? So, I would make a motion to reappoint Taylor Kyle and Diane Lovell. Taylor is the private provider. I'll just make two motions. Taylor Kyle for the private provider renewal effective July 1st, 2025.
Second.
You got a second?
Second.
All in favor, signal five with a C and a.
Aye.
Any opposed? You got another one?
Yes, sir. I would make a motion that we appoint Diane Lovell as the Citizen Parent Rep on the CPMT for term to begin July 1st, 2025.
No second?
Second.
No second? All in favor, signal five with a C and a.
Aye.
What we're doing, folks, for you that don't know, is we have several appointments that we have to appoint people, and these are on committees over and above that's out in the community. And these folks that they're appointing, they've already been talked to and have agreed to do it. So, we're just not reaching out, picking out a name at random, and that's how that's worked. Anyone else?
I would leave open the opportunity for any of my colleagues to serve on the CPMT team. I've served for five years.
Since Mr. Quinn's not here, can we appoint him?
We can put him on there, he's not here. I tell you what, that's a tough board.
It's a lot of work.
Lot of work on that.
Yeah.
Anybody want it? You want it?
No, no, no. I got two appointments.
Marshall, I got excited there for a brief moment.
That reminds me of going to the sockyard, you gotta keep set on your hand. All right, Marshall, you go ahead with your appointments.
I'd like to reappoint Al Flor on the Recreation Commission.
All right, you got a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, signal five with a C and a.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? All right, you got another one?
Yes, I'd like to appoint Pennick Williams to the Social Services Board.
Okay. You got a second?
Second.
You got a second on that? All in favor, signal five with a C and a.
Aye.
All right, was there another one? I thought there was one more.
I can point out one, Mr. Chairman, that currently Steve Sandy serves as the citizen and the staff representative, as the staff representative, rather, on the Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission. And I know Steve provides a lot of leadership and so forth from a transportation perspective to the Regional Commission. I'm putting him on the spot, but I notice that his term's up June 30th.
Steve.
Steve, you want that? Go back? No problem? All right, need a second on that?
Second.
All in favor, signal five with a C and a.
Aye.
Any opposed? You got it, buddy.
I may pay for that later, Mr. Chairman.
You will pay for that, yeah.
All right, is that everything? That's everybody? All right, so we'll get back into our, into our public hearings. Application for a zoning map amendment, application of Michael Turner, applicant, and Linda B. Simpson, owner. Lisa, there she is.
Here I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We're here for a rezoning on approximately 2.81 acres. The address is 7550 Old Franklin Turnpike. This is in the Union Hall Election District. We're here for a zoning map amendment to rezone from B2 general business to A1 agricultural. And the reason for the rezoning is they'd like the existing structure to be used as a single-family dwelling. The future land use designation is Village Buffer. It's located in the Glade Hill Village. Just to give you a little bit of background, before the property was rezoned in 1992, the property was subdivided into six lots. The plot was titled Home Place. In 1992, lots 1, 2, 4, and 5, which was approximately 10.76 acres, was rezoned from A1 to B2 general business for the purpose of commercial development. First, I don't know the exact reasons, but lots 3 and 6 stayed agricultural. In 1995, on the original parcel, Lot 1, a building was constructed to house a medical office, and now it is the SS-1 Security Office. According to the Commissioner revenues records, this property is taxed as commercial industrial because the structure was constructed in 1994 as a one-story with one full bath, one half-bath, no bedrooms, approximate total area of 1,700 square feet, and it was used as an office. The existing drain field is located on the southern side of the property, behind the structure. Your water source for this is a private well. As I have stated, they would like to go from B2 business to A1 agricultural to convert the structure into a single-family dwelling. The drain field actually, when it was permitted, it had in the notes that it was potentially could be used for a three-bedroom residence. Staff has not received any phone calls or emails regarding the application. There was no one to speak against or for the application at the Planning Commission meeting or public hearing that was held last month. We like to give you a vicinity map of where it's located. We also like to give you an aerial. It's highlighted in the blue, and if you've driven up and down Route 40, I'm sure you've seen the structure. We also like to give you the existing zoning. You will see in the red is your general business. The other color is your A1 agricultural, which basically surrounds this property except on one of the sides. We also like to give you the future land use map. As I stated, this is in the village of Glade Hill. You'll see the boundary here in this pinkish color. This is the conceptual plan showing the existing structure. The septic is somewhere around in this area. This is the picture of the structure. You can see that it was used as an office, but it also could look like a single-family dwelling, and this is just from the backyard. Analysis, the proposed rezone is consistent with the intent of the A1 agricultural district, especially in respects for residential development. The surrounding area consists of neighborhood commercial uses, a couple of single-family dwellings with vacant farmland across Route 40. The comprehensive plan supports dwellings in the village to complement and support the neighborhood commercials. Aspects of the village, single-family dwelling should have less vehicle trips than the office along this primary route. As we've said, as I've said before, the septic permit was potentially approved for a three-bedroom home, even though it was used as an office. The noise generated by the single-family dwelling should be less than what the office use might have been. The applicant has submitted no proffers with the rezone. Given this purpose and intent of the rezone, along with the support of the comprehensive plan, staff and the Planning Commission concludes that the rezone should be approved and is in harmony with the existing use and character trends of the village of Glade Hill. Your Planning Commission did hold their public hearing. They did vote to rezone from B2 to A1 with a vote of six in favor and one absent for a recommendation of approval. I would be glad to answer any questions, and the applicant, Mr. Turner, is also here.
Anybody got any questions in regards to this?
I just have a quick one, Mr. Chairman. Do we know when the last time the septic was pumped?
No, I do not, but Mr. Turner might, or the owner might.
Because I know the septic permit's dated 1994.
I don't know that it's been pumped.
Okay, thank you.
I will agree to pump it.
I'm a stickler for this. I'm known for this.
No, it was very little use over the last 30 years, because it was two people at the most there with a three-bedroom drain field. That was hardly nothing for the system.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Lisa. You folks got anything that you'd like to say, the applicants? You've already said you'd go ahead and address the septic system.
Absolutely. But I'm Mike Turner, and thank y'all for hearing us tonight. But like the permit showed, it's a beautiful little home, and it was set up for a home, but they wanted to use it for office until they didn't need it anymore. But it has been very, it wasn't open to the public, it was just the two people there. So, I'm sure if it's a septic problem, I'd be the first one to want to take care of it. But, you know, the business part, it was zoned to B2 because he wanted to put his business in there. And as you might know, in the Glade Hill area, after Pinhook Minute Market came, it's not been any more commercial stuff built whatsoever. In fact, we've got one that's for lease now, and one's closing down, and the Minute Market has actually had that space for rent for many, many years, because it's never really been full. But, so it's, it just seemed more practical that we could use it for a nice home, and it really wouldn't hurt the business district any.
Thank you.
Anybody else got any questions for Mr. Turner? Thank you, sir.
Okay. And by the way, thank you, only 220 thing, that is terrible.
All right, we'll close the public session. I'm going to open session. Does anybody here wish to speak to this?
Gary Nichols.
Come forward, sir, whoever it is.
I don't think he needs to.
The reason I came is...
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Gary Nichols, 168 Old Salem School Road, Union Hall.
Yes, sir.
I was under the impression that there would be a meeting about Commerce Centers in four locations in Franklin County. That's what the meeting would be about tonight, but apparently I was mistaken.
Would you speak into the mic, please? I can't hear you.
Okay. I was under the impression there'd be a meeting about the development of four Commerce Centers in Franklin County tonight, but I guess I had misinformation.
I think you were probably talking about the meeting we had earlier with the old Maju Craft Building?
No.
I think it's...
They had it, it was on Channel 7 News.
Comprehensive plan.
On the Channel 7 News?
Comprehensive plan.
Oh, comprehensive plan, that's coming up next.
Oh.
Okay, yeah.
Very good. I just wanted information on that.
That's a comprehensive plan. Yeah, we'll get you in just a minute. I promise.
You're right, I'm just gathering information, I'm not here to comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's next. Anyone else here wish to speak to this property on Route 40? All right, we'll close it. Board, what's your pleasure?
I'm prepared to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Please do.
I find that the zoning map amendment will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent properties, that the character of the surrounding area will not be changed thereby, and that such zoning map amendment will be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the county code, comprehensive plan, and with the public health, safety, and general welfare to the community. Therefore, I move to recommend the approval of the applicant's request for a rezone zoning map amendment of 2.81 acres from B2 general business to A1 agricultural as recommended by the Planning Commission with no proffers.
Second.
Got a second? Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote on that, please.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
He's absent.
We lost him.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. Okay, now we'll do the comprehensive plan. Ms. Mathina, you going to do that? Lisa, you going to do that?
No, Stephanie's back to do the comp plan.
Stephanie, I'm sure it's good to see you back.
It only, it's good to see you all. How is everybody?
We're hoping that she's back. Backed back.
You haven't changed your mind yet, have you?
I haven't, but I'm here tonight, and that's what matters.
We can always try, right?
Well, I mean, you gotta keep trying.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I think everyone knows Stephanie Mathina, she was the previous principal planner for Franklin County up until just a few weeks ago, and she agreed to come back with us because really she helped shepherd this entire project, the comprehensive plan. Of course, she's now with the Berkeley Group, had previously been with them before, and still a friend and a good colleague and a professional support even after you leave employment with the county. And so, you were gracious to come back to be with us today, Stephanie, and we appreciate all your good work, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
We do.
Thank you.
Miss you.
I miss you guys. Again, I'm here tonight, we'll enjoy it while it lasts, because you know, much to this man's dismay, it is going to be a long one, I'm sure, so I won't be as quick as the last one, but I'll try to get through it without being here all night. All right. So, what I'm going to do...
I don't know if it's me.
No, it's probably me.
How you doing?
You can't hear me? Okay. What I'm going to do is go over one more time what a comprehensive plan is generally, and then we're going to go through the structure of the new plan. I'm going to hit on the big, major, I'm hesitant to use that word, but the biggest changes from the existing plan, and then we'll high-level go over the objectives and the overall goal. What we won't go through is every single strategy. Hopefully, everybody read it, but we'll have an opportunity, if you have a question about one, you want to ask to reword it, so on, so forth, we'll go through it. So, as usual, stop me along the way if you have any questions, and I will try not to keep you here all night. All right, what is a comprehensive plan? A lot of this is going to sound and look familiar, because we went over this, what seems like yesterday, but really, it was about a year ago at this point. It's legally required, first and foremost, by the Code of Virginia. It's community-driven, so it's not what I wanted, it's not what Lisa wanted, it's not what you all or the Planning Commission individually, it's really driven by the community. We start with public engagement, we hear what they have to say, what's working, what's not working, and we build from there. It helps you all decide priorities and investment, particularly when it comes to budgets, if you're forming new partnerships, you're starting new initiatives. All of it should in some way hopefully tie back to this comprehensive plan, and that's just so that the community knows that decisions aren't arbitrary, and they come from somewhere, and everyone was kind of on board with it before it became an idea. It also, this is also important, as you all know, because we're updating the, we, I'm still saying we, are updating the zoning ordinance. This is sort of the framework for how that plays out and what kinds of regulations you would have in that. An example I would give, you wouldn't write in here in the comp plan, "We want only to eat apples," and then go to your zoning ordinance and require everyone to only eat oranges. So, you want to make sure that they correlate. It does a few things, it's a cyclical document. We start with assessing existing conditions. So, everything in this document, this is the whole thing, it's a little bit longer than we were kind of hoping. It assesses existing conditions, so what's out there now? It assesses existing conditions, so what's out there now? Where are folks working? Where are they living? What are they paying to live there? Where are they sending their children to daycare? What kinds of businesses are out there? It takes that information, pairs it with what we heard from the public, and then it will identify some goals and priorities. Again, we have no apple trees, but we really need apples because they're healthy, so we should plant some. That's sort of the way that this plan works. To that point, it creates an overarching vision. Each comprehensive plan here, there, and everywhere has a vision statement. It's really the guiding light. We'll go over that tonight. Again, I've touched on this. It should provide some direction for most, if not all, of the decisions that are made up here. That's not to say it has to be written verbatim in here, but it does need to kind of tie back. To that point, another big component of this plan is what's called an implementation plan. It lists strategies, those goals and objectives, who's more or less responsible, and some general timelines. We'll talk about it a little bit when we get to that point. Just reminder, this isn't as specific or dialed in as like a strategic plan, but it's important to have those implementation measures nonetheless. It covers a lot of topics. I'm going to go out of order here. Code of Virginia, more or less, requires a comp plan to have two things, a transportation plan and more or less a land use plan. There's a little bit in there about housing, particularly affordable housing at this current state. But that said, most comprehensive plans also touch on infrastructure, public services, economic development, cultural assets, tourism, the environment. Code of Virginia really only requires you to look at land use and transportation, but we like to be a little bit more robust. It will include things that are not here on this list. Two examples of what we included in this plan that are not typical agriculture, we have an entire chapter dedicated to that. While we don't have all of the answers to the problem, childcare is another one that's in here that's not often included. So every comp plan is not equal, but that's what's in ours, and we'll go through the table of contents. Lots of people use it. We can break all of those people down into about four categories. Franklin County as a whole, so staff looked at it when they were looking at the rezone that you just heard to make sure it was appropriate with what the existing comprehensive plan said. The planning commission looks at it when they're making their recommendations. You all look at it when you're making your decisions. Again, staff will look at it when they're pursuing grants or yeah, 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 yeah. Developers will look at it to make sure that their ideas are what you all wanted, what the community said, hey, we want this twenty years from now, let's build towards it. State and regional agencies, as well as federal on some level, will look at it from like a grant perspective, particularly VDOT is a good example. We'll touch on this when we talk about transportation. Let's say the county goes for a grant to fix X Y Z road and X Y Z intersection. VDOT is going to look at this plan and say, is it called out in here? They want to make sure, again, there's that alignment with what you're pursuing and what you all agree to through this document. Last but not least, certainly are the community members. They hold you all accountable, they hold staff accountable, they hold your, your commissions and your appointed boards accountable to make sure that this is all going to happen unless circumstances change and the appetite changes, which is fine. So for example, here, two years, three years from now at budget time, hopefully the community members are coming to these budget meetings and they say, okay, look, in the comp plan, we said more apples and all we're buying are pears. What's up? So that's how the, the community can use it. Forming community groups like the Westlake Group, the Union Hall Advisory Group. Those are just two examples. Farum Forward came out of a similar process for the Farum Village Plan. So equally important groups here, but everybody uses it in a little bit different way. It's gone to sleep. Didn't get very far. Well, while we wait. Any questions so far?
Anybody got any questions for Steph?
Why is it doing this to me? Okay, thank you. All right, you've seen this about a hundred times, it feels like. This is just to kind of paint the picture. So you have two things that are really one. You have a comprehensive plan, the two twenty corridor plan, the Union Hall Village Plan, the Westlake Hills Ford Area Plan, and the Farum Area Plan are all arms of the overall comp plan. They're a part of it. They all serve the same purpose. Existing conditions, what's next over ten to twenty years? Those are the vision. Those are best case scenario, we have all the money, all the resources, all the people, we get every wish granted, this is what we want. In order to make that happen, you have to implement these plans. Zoning and subdivision help with that. Capital Improvement Plan, which is money, obviously. Strategic and Work Plan, specific. An example would be a sewer study for Union Hall. And then the official map, where things are going, where things are appropriate. This is not the end all be all of how to implement it, but these are the big ones. So just remember, as we go through this, comprehensive plan, vision, overall, that's the goal. Difference between zoning and comprehensive plans. Zoning orden, zoning ordinance is, is law. This is just policy. So let's say in here again, I'm still on it, everybody needs to be planting apples. If nobody does it, you can't go after them for not doing it. Whereas if it were in a zoning ordinance, it's a little bit different. This is just a guideline. Zoning ordinance is law. It has a little bit more teeth to it. The zoning ordinance does not have a limit on it. It should be updated as you all are learning and you're doing it now, but the comprehensive plan does. It typically has a twenty-year timeframe. The last comprehensive plan was two thousand and five or seven?
Seven.
Two thousand and seven. So it's been almost twenty years. It's a typical, typical timeframe. It could be shorter, especially for your area plans. Those are about five to ten. That said, lots of folks and Franklin County has amended the comp plan over time to add things in that come up that are important. Solar is a, is a, is an easy example. But those are just some quick differences between the two. They often get confused, certainly in rural localities that are large, folks will often confuse them for the same thing. They do talk and play nicely, but they are different. Any questions about that? In summary, comprehensive plan is a planning document. It just helps guide decisions specifically about investment and growth. It informs those ordinances and regulations that we just talked about. It should be guiding the CIP and departmental budgets so that money, again, has a starting point. It's countywide, so it's the entire county. It is not something that promises immediate change. It's not a site plan, so it's not saying, okay, this shopping center is coming in to this area and it's going to look like this and these are the stores that will be there. It is not that type of document. It will call out where commercial may be appropriate, but it does not go so far as to get site specific. Any questions about this distinction between what it is and what it isn't? All right, now we're going to go over the process, how we got here. So we started March twenty twenty-four with the planning commission work sessions. We had ten total, if memory serves, where we took chapters to the planning commission and went through more or less page by page. We talked about what was in there, what wasn't in there, what strategies were included based on that information. They did incredible work. Even being back at Berkeley Group now, I hope no one hears me say this, and I told them this then, they had more participation than any planning commission I've ever seen. They took it seriously, they did their homework, they looked at the documents, and they came prepared. It does not happen everywhere. That is for certain. So they worked really hard on it. Throughout that period, we had a website built, so every time the planning commission packets went out, it was also uploaded to the website so that folks could look at it at the same time. There were short surveys included with that. Do you agree with what's in here? Do you think we're missing something? So on, so forth. Didn't garner a lot of response, a little bit here and there, but that was available. Planning, the, the website is still up, I believe. We also have it on the regular planning website for the county, but we built a special one just for this. So it started with public engagement, which was data collection, that's census data, that's VDOT data, et cetera, going to the public. We had seven workshops, one in each district. Some were better attended than others. Overall, I think we had, hold on, seventy people, just about seventy people. And we also had a public online survey at the same time to gather feedback. Again, what's working, what's not working, what would they like to see change, that sort of thing. From there, we started drafting, and that was that period of ten work sessions. We started with those work sessions in March of twenty twenty-four and we just finished up March of this year and took it to the planning commission for their hearing in April. Time is flying. I can't keep up with it. Pretty, pretty short in this, in the grand scheme of a comprehensive plan. We were at it every single month, but do not let the shortened timeline fool you. They worked very, very hard in that time. And again, there were public opportunities for input from day one where folks could either write in an email response, they could submit a survey response. The work sessions are open to the public, of course. We had a few that would come sit in and listen. So that was phase two, and then now we're in phase three. So we wrapped up the work sessions, had a public workshop where we presented the plan. People could drop in, ask questions, review some, some pages, the strategies. Decent attendance on that, we had at the Franklin Center, and then we started the hearings. So that's where we are now. Any questions about the process?
Anybody got any questions for her in regards to the process?
Can I take a drink for a second?
Don't think so.
Okay. I already touched on this. I won't make you listen to them anymore, but we had a website, a survey, public workshops, and a public open house, and then we had the work sessions, of course. So quickly on the survey, it was open for, what is that, six to seven weeks? We got about two hundred and seventy-two responses. That's a good number. For fifty-five thousand people, it may not seem like it, but by way of surveys, that's typical, better, better than I probably would have expected with it being such an overdue update. The last update was in two thousand and seven. Certainly, there wasn't an online survey then, so things have changed, methods have changed, so that's a good response. Feel good about that. Key things we found through that engagement, things that folks loved, this is going to be no surprise, the rural character, pace of life, and the proximity to two lakes. Top concerns were lack of incentives to attract and retain younger generations and lack of job growth and availability. Other priorities that were included but didn't kind of rise to the top quite as much, infrastructure improvements, workforce and economic development overall, better education was a big one, more housing options and variety. However, there was a consensus overall that new housing should be in certain areas, so it's not kind of sporadic and all over the place. And safe and efficient transportation systems came up, as well as public transportation. Similarly, public workshops, we had seven of those. Again, we had just under seventy people. We advertised those a slew of ways. Decent participation on those. We had one where no one came, but that's okay. Hopefully, they took the survey. Key findings for that, commercial and industrial development are needed to stimulate some economic growth and create new job opportunities that will stay here in the county. Some form of public transportation, again, particularly for low income and aging, we heard that specificity during the workshops. Lots of intersections throughout the county need safety improvements. General road maintenance is another one, which is not unfamiliar to any of you. Housing affordability and options was echoed again here. We heard that the county should attempt to distribute public amenities and services more equally. Agriculture and conservation should be protected for, for view sheds and working agriculture, as well as because it's a cornerstone of this county's character. Lots of similarities between the survey and the workshops. Any questions? Yes?
Is this typical, these findings, Stephanie, to a rural area similar to Franklin County?
Yes.
Do you think this is similar across the board?
Yes. We're working over at Berkeley, now I'm six weeks in, so I'm kind of coming and catching up. Henry County, Martinsville, Prince George, Lynchburg, and even though those are all different, housing, preserving ag, even in Lynchburg, you hear it, you even hear it in Martinsville, and transportation. There are, I don't want to say problems, but that's for lack of a better word right now, that just exist across the state and really the nation that everybody feels. Some just feel it harder when they don't have as deeper pockets or more resources. That said, none of this is a surprise, and I think a lot of what we heard from the survey and the workshops are things that we all know, living and working and walking around here. It's, it, none of it's a secret. Protect ag, it's important, not just the working ag, but you look out, folks move here because they want to open their front door to a field, you know? So it's not just about the working land, it's also view sheds. Jobs are a whole nother one. You talked about the CTE and what you read. It's, these are patterns. Anything else? All right, now to the plan. So I've color coded this for you just tonight. So the things in blue, so one, two, and appendix B are more or less in this plan to be informational, there to teach you something, how the plan works, who Franklin County is. So I'll show you an example. If you open to chapter two, page thirty-one is one example. It starts with demographics. Who's living here? What's the median age? What's the median income? Again, what's our housing stock? So all of that's information. The green is where information meets policy. So chapters three through ten, and we'll throw in eleven, are what we're calling component chapters, and that's all that stuff that we talked about what seems like an hour ago, transportation, housing, infrastructure, utilities, so on, so forth. Each element, each component has its own chapter. That's really more or less the meat of this plan. We'll just say this whole stack of paper. That is for the most part informational. There is some policy, if you will, in there, but we tried to build most of the policy through the strategies, which are the implementation. But the planning commission felt very strongly that there should not be a strategy if there is not information, and there should not be a strategy for what there is not information. So chapter three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten seem dense, but it's to paint a picture for each one of those components. Hopefully, you've read it and you, you are like, yeah, that makes sense. I read it and I, I hear what you're saying. The red are the actions. Those are the ones, okay, so what? Chapter three through ten are information, the red parts are what you're going to do about it. The red parts are your future land use. That one's a little bit more abstract. It's not something that you can more or less check off of a, of a list, but just like tonight in your rezoning, it was put to work. That staff report had to look at the future land use map and say, okay, they want to rezone it to this, what does the future land use map say? Does it say we need to only put pear trees here because if so, they want to build an apple and it's not going to work? The chapter twelve implementation, those are the strategies. Those are the, the steps to take, even if they take twenty years. And then appendix A, same thing as chapter eleven, but it's for the designated growth areas, Farum, Union Hall, two twenty North Corridor, Westlake Hills Ford. Any questions about this structure? Information overload. Okay.
Anybody got any questions?
Okay. I'm going to try, I'm going to quickly go through this. I don't want to leave anything out. So if you want me to skip back to a slide, just raise your hand and I'll back up. High school diploma is the most common level of educational attainment in the county, meaning that's kind of where it, it stops or, or plateaus. The population has obviously grown since nineteen hundred, but if you look at this, it was pretty steady until about nineteen seventy, and then from nineteen seventy to about two thousand and ten, it more or less skyrocketed, and it has plateaued and declined a bit since then. I don't have it memorized. It's projected to decline a little bit more, and then from twenty thirty-ish to twenty forty, it's supposed to go back up a little bit. All that to say, though, what in reality you'll probably see is just steady. It's not going to decline terribly, but it's also not going to grow. Forty-eight is the median age. That has risen year after year. For comparison, in nineteen seventy, it was twenty-nine. That's a state pattern as well as a national pattern. We are an aging population as far as countries go. Predominantly white, non-Hispanic. And just a quick note on population projections, the counties to the south of Franklin County are projected to continue declining over the life of this plan. Everyone to the north of us. Everyone to the north of us is in singled actual digits. You'll see Franklin County has .61 projected growth, but it's still growth nonetheless. But just, we're kind of in that sandwich there, in the middle, between folks that are growing and folks that are projected to decline. Median household income, 66, little over 66,000. Poverty rates, 13%, unemployment rates, 2.8%. You'll have to forgive me, it's been a little bit since we wrote this. I want to say these are 2023 numbers from US Census. So household income is much lower than the state. Poverty rate's a little bit higher, but unemployment rate is a smidge better. As far as commuting go, more people are commuting out than are commuting in or that live and work here in the county. So lots of folks leaving to go to work elsewhere. Top five employers, school board, cornerstone building brands, which apply gym, County Franklin, Franklin Memorial, and Trinity Packaging. Any questions so far on what you've seen? Okay. Median home value, so this is not sales price, this is important to note when we're in the housing market that we're in. Median home value is a census designated number. In the market that is happening out there, this is very low. So just know that they're two different numbers, we don't really go on the market because that could change in an instant. So median home value is a little over 200,000. Median gross rent is 800, which is significantly lower than the state, almost by half. Home ownership rate is amazing, 80%. I'm not a housing expert, as far as mortgages go, but it's a pretty good number when you look across the state, much higher than the state. Cost burdened means that you pay more than 30% of your income for housing, whether you're renting or you own. In Franklin County, 16% of homeowners are cost burdened, and 30, almost 36% of renters are cost burdened. Better numbers than the state, nothing to like write home about. Thirty, the 36% particularly. So basically, that means that folks are paying way more than they can afford for, for rent, especially when we don't have tons of rental options here. As far as housing types, majority of it is single-family detached, so one house on one lot, separate. The, that's 73% of the housing stock. Another 17% is manufactured homes, which semantics, again, one home on one lot. The age of housing stock has gotten older and older. The peak was really around 1980, give or take, and has slowly declined since then. Certainly, since 2008, for very obvious reasons. Again, this is another pattern where development just isn't bouncing back where it was before that 2008 crash. Any questions on housing?
Stephanie, do you think the reason that the rent, renting and the cost burden is so high in Franklin County, it's because of the lack of?
I think the renter percentage of being cost burdened is so high because there aren't enough rental units.
Right.
And when we say that, really apartments, you, you need like a true stock.
Okay.
And then I think it's wages. The wage just is not keeping up with what housing prices are generally. So someone might own a, a home, I don't want to speak for anybody, and they might say, well, this is worth 2,000 to me, because I know they'd pay that in Roanoke. So they charge it, but the wages here are not the same. And so they're not earning what they should be, but they're paying comparable prices to what's around you. Again, the housing market is a whole, whole nother thing that you could go on and on about, but I think that's probably the biggest driver here for cost burden renters, not enough units, and then the wages contribute to that. Cost burdened owners are probably fixed incomes. I would imagine, just based on the aging population that's here, it might be a lot of folks that are on a fixed income, but they still have, hopefully not a mortgage, but they still, even if they don't, they still have homeowners' costs, insurance, landscaping, heating repairs, that sort of thing. And then the market just messes it all up, and I'm not a realtor, so I won't start talking about the market.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Stephanie, real quick, are, are these statistics out of Weldon Cooper?
These are US Census.
Okay.
The only ones that are Weldon Cooper so far, population projections are Weldon Cooper. Historic population is a mix of Weldon Cooper and Census. Think everything else is Census. There's also some, what is it called? Virginia Employment Commission will put together some, some data based on Bureau of Labor. But they're all similar. Majority of what's in this plan is going to be US Census. It's the most reliable from a planning standpoint. It's consistently available, the methods have been there. But Weldon Cooper, as far as projections go, are typically what we'll use. In here, when it talks about school enrollment and school age, that's Weldon Cooper. They have their, their niche, and projections are one of them. Okay, any more questions so far? All right. We've gone over this a little bit, but I just want to make it, well, maybe we haven't. The way that the plan itself is structured, not this long-winded presentation, there is some information at the beginning that talks about what a comprehensive plan is, the legal authority to have one, da-da-da. It will then go over the planned components and lay out the transportation chapter, the housing, the utilities. Then you have your implementation chapter, which bundles up all of those strategies. Any questions about the structure? The way too, just so you know, the department heads know this, the Planning Commission knows it. The way we wrote this, from chapter 12 on, when you go next year to do your budget and your CIP and you're making choices and you're making decisions, you should be able to pull this whole chapter out, and it's a chart, and so it's nice and tidy, and you can just look at it and say, okay, what did we say we need to spend money on? What did we say we need to shake hands on and, and form a partnership? So we try to make it easy, so that way you don't have to read through a bunch of paragraphs. All right, before I, spoiler alert. Any questions so far before we get into what's changed from the, the existing plan to now? Other than the obvious? Future land use. The future land use map, for the most part, has not been substantially changed. A few things that we did, do you see these gray dots right here? Snow Creek, Glade Hill, Burnt Chimney, and Callaway. In the existing plan, they are called, I've already forgotten, villages. They're called villages. As many of you know up here, the Farum, West Lake Hills Ford, Union Hall, and the 220, actually, not that one, forget that one. Those three are designated growth areas, but we call them villages. So it's a little bit confusing, so what we did for this plan is instead, we're calling those, get back. We're, we're calling those rural villages, just to, to, to make it distinct that when we are out here saying village money, village improvement, village this, village that, you're probably talking about West Lake Hills Ford, Farum, Union Hall, potentially 220, as a designated growth area. So that's one change. Another change to that note, there used to be seven, I think. We got rid of Pinhook. Chances of that becoming its own village or its own designated growth area in the lifespan of this plan is not likely if you just look at the last plan alone. It called it out and nothing major has changed, so we got rid of that one. I think that's it. The old plan had Union Hall as one, Burnt Chimney, Callaway, Glade Hill, Snow Creek, Hills Ford, and then West Lake and Farum were identified as unincorporated towns, which, again, broken record here, those have been absorbed in DGA's. So we've lessened those. We cleaned up some of this yellow, this yellow is low-density residential. We cleaned up some lines just to follow roadways, so it's not cutting through parcels. We cleaned it up here around the town. And then the other big change that we added here is this blue line around the lake, and what we're calling this is the lake influence area. And all this is saying is that, hey, in these areas, 1.5 miles, so one half a mile in from the shore, in any of these areas, the predominant future land use is the yellow, okay? That low-density residential. This blue line is indicating, because of the nature of the lake, a marina might pop up, a restaurant, a bed and breakfast, an inn, some of those lake geared commercial uses or non-residential. So that is what that blue line is. If you turn to page, any page, if you go to page 253 or thereabout, this is how they're all laid out. So each future land use designation has a little chart that just gives some guidelines, some general appropriate uses. Now, I want to be crystal clear here, this is not zoning. So when we say, okay, low-density residential, primary land use types, single-family residential, accessory dwelling units, cluster residential, this is not saying all of those can locate on any given property, no questions asked. That's what the zoning ordinance is for. But the zoning ordinance will look to this to know what types of uses to allow and how. So this is generalized. So for each land use category, each of those colors, there's a little chart that has that. To the right here, these brighter colors, this is going to be confusing, so stay with me. West Lake Hills Ford, Union Hall, 220 North, and Farum are all designated growth areas. Aside from Union Hall, because we just did it. Those have their own future land use categories. What we did, we did not materially change any of those colors or boundaries. We just cleaned up the names a little bit, so there's some consistency. So what I mean by that, West Lake more or less had its own names, Farum had its own, Union Hall had some. So they're all streamlined now. So all four of those designated growth areas use the same future land use designations as shown on the right. Does that make sense? They're separate from the county. So the brighter colors are the DGA. And why that matters, see this pink here in West Lake? And this blue here, pink, residential mixed use, maybe some patio homes, maybe some apartments, maybe some townhouses. You probably, I'm guessing, wouldn't want that smack dab here in the middle of the county. So those types of future land uses are, are geared to the designated growth areas, that was the plan all along. Good planning practice, that's what you want to do. So that's why the colors are different, and that's why they're in there. They're on this map for you tonight. They have their own maps in the, in the separate village plans. Any questions on that? Okay. What else here, anything, anything? Another big one here, West Lake Hills Ford boundary. We heard through your advisory committee when we were working on adding strategies into that plan, gosh, almost three years ago, two years ago, to pull the boundary back. So this proposes that. So the dashed line is a little blurry here, but it would basically bring it back to Lost Mountain. So all of this dashed area, we're proposing to take away. So the West Lake Hills Ford area would shrink by quite a bit. Right now, 13-ish square miles, I think, is what the West Lake Hills Ford designated growth area is. The Union Hall's about two square miles. I think you could put this shape right here, so you're probably losing about two square miles. Any questions on that, thoughts?
So Stephanie, with the DGA boundary for West Lake, is it being pulled in down Scruggs Road?
We only changed it on that western boundary. That's where we heard the most call for it. And where we run into trouble with Scruggs is Brooks Mill and that intersection.
I just know that our farming community
Yeah.
had concerns about being in a DGA because the treatments of a DGA are counterintuitive, I think, to the ag community.
Right, which is more or less the reason that this was pulled back up here on the western boundary. It's also just really big. It's, it's pretty big, especially through that corridor, you have Booker T there and it kind of halts development, but it's a good thought, this can be changed if, if you all want to talk about it and pull it back in more, but if it comes all the way up to Scruggs Road and Brooks Mill, that roundabout project, or whatever the intersection improvement is, should the county want to keep pursuing that, kind of takes it out of the running if it's not in a DGA.
Which roundabout project are you talking about?
The Brooks, is it Brooks?
Scruggs Road in the
Yeah.
Yeah, which we didn't get awarded this time around, second year. But it will be resubmitted, I'm, I'm guessing, so your point being that if we start down that, you know, if we start going down Scruggs Road, that's going to put us in a bad position for smart scale.
I would leave that one in there.
I hear you, okay.
At least to that point.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I mean, it's, you have a tough job, I mean, there's never a, a solution that, that appeases everybody. And that, this is like a prime example of it, it's a tough decision, but if you, if you pull it up, it has merit, but if you, it will lose.
I think that's a great point.
Okay. Because this can be changed, let's say you try one more time, you're like, all right, this is the last time we're going to try, cross our fingers, see what happens, and you get shot down a third time, you know, I'm not telling you what to do, maybe that's when you say, okay, we'll, we'll try a different route. This isn't forever, but smart scale funding gets less and less, so.
We're working on it.
You know? So I think if I were you, I would leave it for now, because this can be changed if you feel like it was the wrong decision. But are you, is everybody good with the, where we pulled it back as shown? Okay. All right, that's all on future land use. Any questions about any of the categories? What's listed in their little charts? What their colors are? Okay. All right, another map I want to go over. Thank you, everyone back there for being patient, this is such a long process. If you go to page something, 129.
129?
129. It looks like this map and a chart. Part of VDOT's, well, not VDOT, CTV, part of Code of Virginia that requires a comprehensive plan is to call out, thank you, priority projects. Remember at the top, at the beginning of all this, I mentioned that VDOT, let's say you all go for a grant application, we'll use the one we were just talking about. They're going to say, is it in your comp plan? So these 10 projects, through public engagement, previous smart scale applications, and, and, you know, quarterly communications with VDOT, that's where these 10 came from. So I want to call them out here and talk through them if there are any questions, if there are any issues, before we get through them. I also want to call out another set of project ideas. These are things that we also heard a lot about, or staff had on their radar, but didn't quite make the cut because we just know at this point it's not feasible. It's way too expensive, it's not affecting enough people, that sort of thing. So I'm going to go through these, and then I'll kind of open it up if y'all have any questions or you want to talk through any of these. Forgive us, they're not in order, and I want to make it clear, I think we have it in here. These are not in a specific order, so A is not more important than J, it's just the way that they're listed. So these are all equally important when you all go to make decisions and apply for grants. Henry Road and 220, that was a smart scale application again this year. It did not happen, I think the price tag on that one was 40 million. The last time was 20 million, the time before that, I think, was like 13. So just for some context, how things are growing. Kemp Ford and Route 40 intersection study. Microtransit countywide. We heard a lot about public transportation, obviously in a rural county that looks very different than it does in a city or a town. We already have the Farum Express, but microtransit would be a little bit more on-demand, shorter areas, and it's a place to start, there are grants out there to study it, what would work, what wouldn't work, potential routes, on and on. So microtransit countywide, pedestrian infrastructure in all of the DGAs. VDOT partners on our behalf this past time went for some H-SIP funding for pedestrian improvements in both West Lake and Farum. That H-SIP funding just changed at the last minute and it wasn't available the way that, that they were hoping. So efforts have been put out there. There was a gap study, so an OIP study in the West Lake area that looked at pedestrian infrastructure gaps and had some very loose cost estimates for how to build out infrastructure, sidewalk, crosswalks, that sort of thing. But it's important in every single DGA. Route 220 and Bethlehem Road Intersection Improvement and Access Management Study. I want to call out B and E here, the reason it says study specifically. VDOT has said, these two intersections either don't have enough data, don't have enough VDOT has said, these two intersections either don't have enough data, don't have enough crash data. Or are a little bit too complicated, cumbersome, if you will, two twenty being that one. To just jump right into an application for construction. They wanna study it first and know what's, what the problem is and what would best be the solution. So those two are studies, whereas everything else on here is, is a true project. Route one twenty-two corridor improvements overall. Ms. Smith mentioned Ray's Grant, which I think is now called Build again. Same, same. So long as that stands with the federal changes in money. But this is just getting to, okay, we have the study, that'll happen over the next couple of years. This is getting to little improvements bit by bit.
Well, that's a totally new initiative for us now, independent of the Ray's Grant.
Oh, good, okay. Scruggs Road and Brooks Mill Intersection. Taylor's Road and two twenty Intersection. Webster Road and Forty Intersection, and Warts Road and two twenty. So those are the ten projects, some are intersection specific and some are obviously a much bigger scope. That are highest priority over the next ten-ish years. This plan is a twenty-year document, the transportation section should probably be updated much sooner than that. Thoughts on these ten? Do you love them, do you hate them?
Anybody? Say that again.
Do you love them or do you hate them?
Oh, no, they.
Or just somewhere in the middle?
No, I'm gonna tell, I'm gonna tell you, it's a lot of work here.
Yes.
You've, you've put a lot of work in there and you've given us a lot of insight. I mean, I'm, I was sitting here, that's the reason I went, I was trying to read this and comprehend a couple of things when you asked that question.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot.
It, it's, it's a whole lot.
It is.
And you've, you've given us a lot of good advice. And you really opened our eyes up to a lot of stuff and it's, yeah, I can tell that you put a lot of time in it and a lot of effort.
We did, we tried.
I hope this is not why you got run.
Oh, no, no, no. I, I left to do more of this. I said, I left to do more of this.
Really?
Stephanie, if I just may just interject a quick comment. This is a lot, this documents almost three hundred pages. And I had asked for a work session for this, because we, we got this Friday, Thursday or Friday. And this is such great stuff and it's so critical. I don't know how in the world we could take all this in and have a chance to ask you appropriate questions tonight. So I, I don't want you to think because of the lack of questions or feedback that, that presents it a negative way to you. Because you've done extraordinary work, but it's a lot to take in in one evening.
It is, quite a bit. Do we want to keep going through it? And I'll get through, answer any questions that you do have or have come up and see how you feel. And then I'm sure that if you don't feel up to making a decision, or you can't, until you talk through some more of this. After you've had a chance to read it more thoroughly, staff could come back. But I'm here now, so if you do have, have any, I'm happy, I'm happy. Even though I know you probably haven't read all three hundred, it's a lot.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Would, would you be amenable, okay, with coming back one other time for a work session?
I think I will probably need to put some hard boundaries. I could come back for one more.
It would be, it would be at your discretion.
Okay. I would need it to be in the evening, I work, and it's hard to get away.
Has to be in the, in the evening?
Please, it's, it's hard to get away. Even if I do work from home, the hours are the hours nonetheless. Even if that's maybe four, we could look at some dates. I will, I will, if it will be helpful. If it will be helpful, if you will go home and read it and come back with questions.
Well, I can only speak for myself, I'm gonna go home and read it.
Okay.
And I'm gonna go home and put it in a book where it's just this.
I've gotten through half of it, but.
Good.
I have not got through half of it.
It's a lot.
It is a lot.
It's a lot to comprehend.
It is.
I mean, I've, I've got a couple of questions that. And I know, you know, by the, the county being partly zoned and partly unzoned. What's that gonna cause, if anything? Because I know, I know some of these folks, they do not want to be zoned.
That's an easy one, so this won't touch zoning at all, any way, shape or form. Completely separate, completely, completely, completely. And while I've said a couple of times tonight, what's in here informs that zoning ordinance. You all have talked about it, you do not want to change that zoning boundary. So it will not happen as part of the zoning ordinance work that's running concurrent to this. But this process in and of itself doesn't touch zoning, it can't touch it, it won't touch it legally, it can't do it. So nothing that you adopt or don't adopt in this document will have any ramification whatsoever on what is zoned right now today. Or even how it's zoned.
Okay.
And that's a promise.
I believe you. Well, that, does that open up any questions? How do the rest of y'all feel, I mean, about asking her if, if in her discretion, your discretion. If we have to have a special meeting to come back at one evening and meet with you and. Try to read this, give us a little time to read it and.
How, how, this is more for your sake. How would that work? Would it be a work session where you've read it? I can be there to keep going through it and answer the questions? It may be beneficial for me to keep going through it, get through it, so you have some background context as you go to read it. But then, would it be easier, staff, county attorney? Would that be a public hearing again? How does that work? If they don't, if you table it tonight, staff could carry the public hearing.
We can still have the public hearing tonight.
Okay. Do you feel comfortable making a decision, though?
No, I, I don't think so, how about the rest of you?
No, indeed.
Okay, okay, alright.
It's a whole lot of his business, no.
Okay.
We can have the public hearing tonight, that's no.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, Madam, just add, that wasn't the intent tonight, it was not any expectation that the board would take action, I think that's in their.
That's already in your.
Yeah.
No expectation.
That's correct, just, just to hear from the public, hear from Stephanie, overview, hear from the public. And all of that is good feedback for this board then, and the work sessions. That you make work session or work sessions to work through the, to work through the document.
I mean, we might, we might even have, it'd be up to the board, whatever y'all think. We may even have a couple, or at least one work session on our own without you present. Not that we don't want you, but without, because of your, your time. But to come up with a bunch of questions, so that when you come back and maybe even send you a list of those questions, so we don't blindside you with it.
Well, that's what I was going to offer. If you all felt comfortable with that, you could work with staff, hold it. Lisa knows it. I was like in the trenches in there, you know, but nonetheless, she knows it. She can answer the questions, she can walk you through it. If you wanted to have a meeting, write down those comments, questions, send it to me. It may be something that I can give you some clarity on without coming back. And that's not just for me, that's to not eat up more of your time. Where I could give some written response to kind of give you clarity. And talk you through something without anybody having to come back, just as if maybe a first step.
Stephanie, one thing, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead with your one thing.
One of the things that I thought would be helpful, if it's possible, for the board to get an overview of highlighted areas. Representing things that have changed or are new in the plan. So that it draws our attention to what is different with this plan over the current plan.
Okay. The entire plan is different, so that would be hard to do. It's formatted different, it's structured different, the strategies are all new. None of those are reworded the same or carried over. Future land use, we've gone over that one, the transportation projects are also different. So there's really, other than some of the similarities that we covered in the future land use map, everything else is, is brand new.
It's a new document.
It's totally new. I think I said it before and I was not kidding, you basically threw it in the trash. You took that whole document, threw it away and rewrote it from the ground up.
I remember you saying that.
Except for the future land use map, which is not atypical. You know, you don't drastically change that, so that's about the one thing that's a similarity between then and now.
What about the rest of the board, how you guys feel?
That's fine with me, Mr. Chairman. And Stephanie, I'd just like to reiterate for the people in the crowd and who might be listening at home. And this gets brought up every time you're here and talking about this. This plan in no way, shape or form can change anyone's zoning designation, whether they live in a zoned area or they don't. This comp plan will not change your zoning.
I promise you.
It cannot and will not.
It will not, and if it makes them feel better, the county attorney can attest to that I am not making this up. There is no legal way for this document to change anybody's zoning.
I think it's a zoning rewrite, Nick, that I think is what people are worried about. That's going on as we speak, and we'll get that.
But that won't change anyone's zoning designation either.
But that conver, that conversation, I mean, we're not gonna go in and tell somebody if there are one that now you're. R three or a new zoning classification per se. But the law will not allow us to do that with the comp plan.
It won't, we can't do it with the other one either.
What do you mean, we can't? Well, that's, that's a conversation for a different time.
But I, people still designate this as zoning. When they're thinking about it.
They shouldn't.
Ah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
I promise you, though, tell them, if everybody's listening, please watch this and only this thirty seconds, it will not change.
Anyone else got any comment or any reserves or?
I would, I would just add, I think you did an A-plus job on it, so thank you very much. Where this comprehensive plan is a vision statement or vision document, it's not a commitment that we're making to spend money. And I, I am comfortable tonight adopting this, that, those were the words that we used. I'm fine if everybody wants to wait, they wanna do more work, but I would be fine adopting the plan as it is tonight.
I'll second what Dan said.
Do you want me to, let me see where I'm at. So we're to the implementation, which is the overall vision, and then it gets into the objectives. And like I said, I am not going, cause I've already kept you all here, well, I'm doing okay, actually. I feel like I usually go on and on. Hold on, I'm finding it. Chapter twelve, the implementation. It would take us a whole nother evening to go through one by one. But what I can do and what I planned to do is go over the overarching goal and then give you some highlights of what it talks about. Some examples of some of the strategies. Do you want me to at least get through that and see how you feel?
Please.
Okay. Alright, I'm not gonna read this whole thing. Mentioned it earlier, every comprehensive plan has a vision statement. It's the overarching kind of lighthouse, everything points back to that. It's overly positive, it's forward thinking, it's pie in the sky. So you're gonna hear this and you're gonna be like, what in the world? That is not what's happening right now, as much as we're trying, or it is or it isn't. This is what you're shooting for, perfect world. In twenty forty-five, Franklin County is a community committed to fostering educational excellence. I'll paraphrase, seeking innovative actions and initiatives that provide economic stability. Preserving and protecting its natural assets and agricultural character. Securing safe and equitable transportation networks, ensuring ample housing opportunities. Forging partnerships and allocating resources to provide reliable and adequate infrastructure. And taking transparent and responsible government actions overall. So that's the overall vision. We're gonna go through chapter by chapter, I'm gonna read you the goal. And then I'm gonna give you some brief examples of what's included in those strategies, you can follow along with me. So we're on page. One thousand of two thousand, no, I'm just kidding. Two sixty-two. Chapter three is your historic and cultural resources chapter. The goal for this chapter, in twenty forty-five, Franklin County values, protects, promotes its heritage. Through festivals, music and the arts, the county uses its unique assets to bolster our quality of life and foster growth in our local economy. Some examples of strategies that we have here to meet that goal over twenty years. Collaborating with federal and state partners to inventory historic resources, update that information. The state does some of that work on their own without being asked, but they're great to work with, there are lots of grants out there. Consider updating the Heritage Ninety-Six Plan. That was done in nineteen ninety-six, surprise, surprise. And it was a, a plan on how to preserve and protect the existing assets that are in the county that are historic. Another one is creating a full-time position in the county that's focused on heritage planning. Resources and tourism, an example of what would fall into that role, the Ag Fair. That's a huge lift right now on staff. Preservation planning, working with DHR to identify some of these facilities. So those are some examples of what's in chapter three. Do you want me to keep rocking and rolling, or do you wanna? Want me to pause?
Any questions?
Okay, I'm gonna keep going, okay. Just like do this if you have one. Okay, chapter four, environmental resources. Goal, in twenty forty-five, Franklin County values and protects our unique natural resources and environments that support clean air and water. Provide habitat for wildlife and offer sustainable recreational opportunities. By being good stewards, future generations will continue to benefit from these resources. Objectives and strategies are, relate to soil, water, air, some examples. Looking at adopting a steep slope ordinance. Development regulations if you're developing on a steep slope. Updating the floodplain regulations, making sure they're up to state with the, up to date with the state code. The state example, forgive me. Continue to work with West Piedmont on the hazard mitigation plan. Revising the zoning ordinance to make sure that the appropriate landscaping is required that's not detrimental to the environment. Looking at the need to expand the septic pump out system program. Those, those are the kinds of strategies in chapter four. Any questions there? Chapter five, agricultural resources. In twenty forty-five, Franklin County protects and supports our farmers through partnerships, programs and policies. That ensure diverse, stable and thriving agricultural and forestry industries. Talks a lot about monitoring USDA prime farmland, updating this plan accordingly. We have some solar language that's been in the plan since you all worked on it a few years ago, that says avoid prime farmland. So there's a strategy to make sure we're aware of what that is and how it's changing. Working to create a buy fresh, buy local program, that's basically a network of farmers markets. Review and amend the zoning ordinance to make sure that ag uses are allowed where they should be with no barriers. Continuing the land use program, those sorts of things. Any questions on the Ag chapter? Oh, another big one there that, that I wanna just call out, is we wrote a strategy to consider creating a, an agricultural strategic plan. I can't remember who it is, it's a county in North Carolina, but they have a great plan. It could be something that the Ag Board does, not putting work on your folks, but. There are some good examples out there to kind of drive some efforts to, to keep Ag, keep Ag on top. Alright, chapter six, transportation. In twenty forty-five, Franklin County prioritizes a reliable, safe and efficient transportation network. That accommodates all users and provides multimodal options to connect people to the places they live, work and visit. Multimodal means car, bike, public transit, all the things. Objectives and strategies, a lot about partnerships with VDOT, going after grants and other federal and state funds for, for projects. Working with Town of Boons Mill and Town of Rocky Mount, when and where necessary and, and as often as possible on improvements. That benefit both the county and the towns. Promoting alternative modes of transportation as best as possible in a rural county. There's another specific one in here about building out and assessing existing gaps. Not just like what happened in the West Lake DGA, but maybe going to Farum. And saying, okay, how's our sidewalk inventory? What is happening, where is it busted, where does it not exist, how can we improve it? Okay, any questions on that one? As you know, transportation is a sticking point and you are at VDOT's mercy. So a lot of the strategies in here, because you, you know, you can't just say, we're gonna spend forty million dollars every single year and growing. On whatever the, the popular choice is that year. A lot of it's going to be about partnerships and working with VDOT and the CTB. Chapter seven, housing. Any questions on six? Chapter seven, housing. In twenty forty-five, Franklin County prioritizes a diverse housing stock that serves and attracts residents of all socioeconomic levels and life stages. From youth and first time home buyers, to the workforce, to retirees and those aging in place. What that means is housing for everybody, no matter who they are, what they're making, where they work, how old they are. Strategies to that end, a lot of the strategies for chapter seven are happening right now as part of the zoning ordinance update. Making sure that housing types, varied housing types are allowed throughout the county where. Making sure that housing types, varied housing types are allowed throughout the county where they should be. Not in the non-zoned areas. We're not touching that. Um, just make that clear. Um, it also talks a little bit about partnership and kind of keeping a finger on the pulse for innovative things are happening. For example, some planning district commissions are starting land banks, um, where they, they are the housing developer. Um, I don't think Wes Piedmont is doing it. They might be. Roanoke Valley, I don't think is, but some are. They are? Okay. Um, no, they're not. Don't listen to me. Um, so just, there are some strategies there just about planning, um, and just keeping an eye on that market. Because of the nature of where things are at right now in twenty twenty-five, normally I don't think this would be necessary. But the housing chapter may also warrant a good hard look in another five to ten years like transportation, just as things keep shifting. But right now, most of the strategies are going to happen as part of that zoning ordinance work, so low hanging fruit, you're already getting started. Um, chapter eight, economic development. In twenty forty-five Franklin County is a regional anchor for economic prosperity with ample job opportunities, opportunities for business growth, and robust workforce development initiatives. Through strategic partnerships, creative incentives, and leverage of unique assets, Franklin County has a resilient and diverse economy. I want to make a quick note here. You'll know when you read, if you haven't already. The economic development chapter of this plan is a supplement to Danny's strategic plan. It comes secondary to that. Her plan is the plan as far as economic development initiatives, um, and that sort of thing. But this goes along with it. So some of the strategies included here, um, are us- utilizing the plan, updating it as necessary, working with Wes Piedmont on the Seds, again, planning initiatives. Um, continuing development that's needed on Summit View Business Park to make sure that's ready to go. Um, leveraging opportunities to grow the tourism industry that's growing statewide. I'm sure Kevin, um, has, obviously is making you aware of that all the time. He stays very, very busy and will probably continue to stay very, very busy. Um, as tourism trends in Virginia keep skyrocketing. Any questions about economic development? Okay. Chapter nine, we have three more. Utilities. In twenty forty-five Franklin County's utility infrastructure is robust and efficient. With broadband access and reliable electrical services available to all residents, businesses, and institutions, every corner of the county is connected. Additionally, municipal water and sewer services and natural gas are available in many or all designated growth areas and much of the Route two twenty corridor, supporting population and economic growth. Strategies here include, um, my vision is starting to go cross-eyed here. Cell phone tower, developing telecommunication facilities, mention of considering if the broadband plan needs to be updated. I don't know how much work is, I think it's more or less, um, made a lot of headway on that, so maybe taking a second look at that, giving it a little brush off. Um, and keep doing the good work on that. Updating the solid waste management plan, um, which is the landfill collection sites. There's a strategic plan specifically for that. It's a five-year plan. Um, so most of that conversation will happen in that plan, but just again, keeping, keeping a finger on the pulse there. Um, and then the other big one here as far as strategies go is continuing the conversation of how to expand water and sewer in the designated growth areas, um, and what those steps are and how they come up. Um, you all know the Water Authority is great to work with and they take a lot of initiative on their own. Um, so that one will be in heavy partnership with the Water Authority. All right. Any questions on chapter nine utilities? Okay. Thank you for bearing with me. I feel like I'm starting to talk like an auctioneer, so if you have no idea what I'm saying, just tell me. Okay. Chapter ten, quality of life. Before I read this, um, it deserves a better description, but quality of life is everything that we have not talked about. It's mostly county services, um, but healthcare, childcare also included in this. So things that aren't utilities, aren't transportation, aren't housing, but, um, contribute or take away to an overall quality of life. In twenty forty-five Franklin County offers comprehensive accessible community services and facilities that promote the well-being, safety, and health of all residents, ensuring a high quality of life for all residents. This is where we talk about the library. She has her own plan, um, brand new from what I understand. Um, fire and EMS, public safety is in here. Some strategies, I don't want to say the wrong thing. So I'm going to read a couple of the public safety strategies to give you an example. Create a dedicated emergency manager role to oversee the county's emergency management, planning, and operations. That's one example. Create a standalone emergency management department. Um, I'm going to skip a few down. I'm not picking out ones that are more important than others. Work towards the implementation of a minimum of one ambulance and one fire apparatus operated by career staff per each fire district. So those, those are some examples of strategies when we talk about public safety, fire, and EMS. Also have their own plans that dive into maintenance and, is he, he could maybe speak to some. I think you've been working on some. Um, so a lot of the county departments, public safety, um, public works, library, economic development. There are standalone plans that, that do not trump this. They work together. So just remember that as you're going through. Also included in this, uh, parks and rec. Some strategies about childcare in this. Childcare is not a, of, an easy solution and it's certainly not any one board's responsibility. But what we could do is revise zoning, make sure it's allowed where it should be without hurdles. The example that comes to mind is last year, year before, uh, daycare needed a special use permit in the Village of Union Hall. It's the one place it probably shouldn't need, um, some extra permitting to get through. So looking at that kind of thing. Um, I think I'm going to stop there with that one. But also schools, um, and overall community engagement, government transparency, getting the word out more, um, as best you can. You know, you can put all the information out, but if folks don't want to bite, they don't want to bite. Um, but we heard that a lot, making sure that the information is out there, decisions are happening in real time. Um, so strategies on that. Last one, we made it. Future land use. In twenty forty-five Franklin County promotes strategic growth and facilitates thoughtful land use patterns that accommodate needed development while protecting the county's character. This careful balance protects the county's important rural and agricultural lands, makes efficient use of limited land, coordinates infrastructure development, and protects property rights. Um, this is a big one. I would say that ag protection and this are some of the biggest themes that come out. Um, things going where they should go and making sense, um, and protecting individual property rights. So the future land use tried to get to that as best as it can. Um, so in the strategies, we talk about amending zoning regulations to make sure open space requirements are adequate to protect, um, agricultural lands, um, buffer regulations. Um, conducting periodic reviews of the zoning and subdivision ordinances to make sure that they're emulating what's in this plan. Um, let's pull out one more. Consider offering incentives. No, I won't do that one. That's too long. Um, oh, here's an easy one. You just did it for Westlake. Review and amend the county's village area plans as often as needed to remain relevant and aligned. Further designate new DGAs as necessary. I will no, not go so far as to call out what would be the next one or where it should be. Um, but the county set out, gosh, I don't know how long ago, with the DGAs to push development where infrastructure was at or could easily go and to protect all of that land, and it is working. Um, so the roots were set a long time ago, and it may be that Faram, Union Hall, and Westlake, from a residential standpoint, two twenty operates a little differently, that those three maybe aren't enough in ten years. Um, so just staying up to date, making sure, hey, we need another D G A, and this is where it makes sense to do it. So, all of that is for future land use. That said, we've started a little bit of questions, but this, this, okay, we're done. Do you feel better? Where are we at with things? How you feeling?
Any questions for, uh, Stephanie from the board? Anybody got any questions? All right, well, if there's no questions, uh, before we do the, uh, uh, public comment, I'm going to take five.
I have one, one more thing.
Oh, no, you go right ahead.
Okay. It's going to be quick, I hope. I hope it's just not confusing. So it's part of this work. When you all did the amendments to the comp plan and the zoning ordinance in twenty twenty-two, I think it was for solar. One of those policy statements, I want to read it to you because it's important. Hold on. Um, well, it won't be verbatim. One of the policies in that original work that we did not change for this plan says, "All solar projects must comply with the solar energy facility siting policy." Well, it was never adopted. Um, so all we're doing now is making it official. The solar energy facility siting policy emulates the zoning ordinance requirements just to make sure that no matter where a solar project is, is, is proposing to go, it's held to the same standards and expectations that it is in the zoned area. Um, it's not new. It's language you've already been doing. It's just not been a, a formally adopted document, even though we said we did it a few years ago. Um, that's kind of stuff happens. So this one's just closing up a loophole. Um, so nothing in there is, is materially new. It's just, again, buttoning up some things. Um, so that's in here and it's part of this work. County Attorney's Office reviewed it. Um, any questions on that?
All right, we have an, on Thursday, Joe Lurch is coming in and.
He's coming in from up at, uh.
Right in Vaco, and he's going to talk about solar site, and I think at that time too. Before we adopt it, I, I think we need to listen to what he's got to say. I'd like to hear what he's got to say and maybe.
We can, we can wait on that. We don't have to do that tonight.
I was going to say, you could do this one separately because it's a little bit different.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's in the back. It's the very last piece of this gigantic pile of papers that you have. Okay, take five.
Thank you.
I finally reached the end of my. I think I did. I'm pretty sure I did. Um, I don't need to pull that up. I'm going to open it to you. Do you have questions? How are you feeling after you hear that? Do you want me to go over anything again? General, specific?
Stephanie, I would like to commend you. Um, this document is beautiful and we're just seeing it in a notebook. But, um, you've done an outstanding job articulating a boring document.
So boring.
In most localities, you know, who wants to read a comp plan three hundred pages long? But you've made this very reader-friendly and user-friendly, and you've just done an outstanding job.
Thank you.
And that's why we miss you already. Your work is just superlative.
You can have this to remember me by.
Absolutely, absolutely.
As much as it's nice, don't keep it for twenty years though, updated.
No.
For then, you can, you can have it to remember me.
Yeah.
You'll have to come back and update it for us.
Okay, I'll do it. I like to write a plan.
She says for, for a price.
Well, yeah, you, yeah. Anybody got any questions for Stephanie? All right, if there's not, Madam Clerk, do you have anybody signed up for, uh, what we'll do, Stephanie, is I'll go into, uh, uh, public, uh, comment. I may need you for some questions.
Sure. I won't leave yet.
Hi, Gary Nich- Gary Nichols.
He left. It took too long. Did he leave? Oh.
Mr. Nichols?
That's too bad.
Anyone else here wish to speak to the comp plan? No? I'm opening it up. Anybody here at all wish to speak to the comp plan as to what, uh, Ms. Matheny just talked about?
And there will be a test.
At the end of the day. All right, you must have done a good job. You explained everything really.
I mean, you'd be up here for two hours. You better. I don't know how long I've been up here, but it's long enough. I hope I did a good enough job.
You did an excellent job. Thank you.
I'm going to have a seat. If you need anything, I'm right there.
Thank you, staff.
Thank you very much. All right, let me get my glasses out, of course. All right, now, Mr. Quinn was, uh, a while ago, we had other matters by supervisors. He was in his meeting and he did hear when we called him on the phone, he's got something that he wants to talk about. Dan?
Thank you.
Thank you, that's enough.
I wanted to give a quick update on a couple of things going on. Uh, first of all, the farmer's market in Union Hall is actually called the Southlake Community Market. It opens this Thursday. Instead of running in the afternoon, it's now going to run from nine in the morning till twelve. Um, there were vendors, whereas just too hot and there's thunderstorms, so they're going to try the morning. And, uh, I was very excited to hear there was a new bread maker and that I was going to be put out of business, but unfortunately that person is not going to make bread, and so I'm back on the hook. I, I thought I was only going to have to cut the grass, but I now have to make bread also. So anyway, moving on, I wanted to mention a little bit about the church. So this is the Union Hall Baptist Church, which is at the corner of Standiford and Kempford Road. And last year we did a, a preliminary information form which made this church eligible for historic listing. Uh, a grant has come up and Reba Dillon's five oh one C three, the Franklin County Recreational Development five oh one C three, has taken the lead at helping the church group to do the grant application. And it came in two parts. There was a short version that had to be submitted and, uh, and they used that as a screening tool to then allow a limited number of participants to do the long version. Uh, we did the, the long version is in process right now and it is due on May twenty-fifth. The really neat thing about this is it's for, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it will cover both the purchase of the land plus the restoration of the building, uh, rather than, uh, trying to make the money in a lot of, of, uh, different ways. And the other thing that was neat about the grant, the director of the Department of Historic Resources said that this particular project would score very high in points and, and was a likely winner. The third thing I wanted to mention is regarding the sewer in the Union Hall District. The Western Virginia Water Authority with, um, the help of the county, applied for a grant with Circap. And this grant would be for about fifty thousand dollars to do the preliminary engineering review and, and a soil test. So, um, we're very hopeful that that will be awarded midsummer and they could complete that work by the end of the year. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, and this is a, a more of a personal issue, but I wanted to explain why I was not here. I have a, a client who's a D O D contractor. They had a shareholder meeting tonight. And they had asked me ahead of time if I would be the chairman of the Board of Directors. I had agreed, but I had to be part of the meeting. So, so I was on the call and I wanted to share that with the board because it, it's a pretty significant change in my portfolio, but won't impact my ability to do this job. It just means fewer hours in retirement. So that's my full update. Thank you.
Y'all going to have any strawberries tomorrow?
Strawberries?
Yeah.
Uh, that's, I actually don't know.
That's a good question.
Yeah, you should come.
All right, let's see what we're going to do now. All right, now it's time in our meeting, we've reached, uh, the time set aside in our meeting for public comment. Public comment gives citizens an opportunity to address the board in person or in writing on matters appropriate to the responsibilities of the board. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes for their comments. Speakers must direct all comments to the board as a whole and not to individual board members or employees of the board will not be tolerated. Likewise, commentary on issues that are not within the purview of the board and that are not a function of the local government and over which we have no control are not acceptable. Public comment is not a question and answer session, and the board members will not answer questions during public comment. If a speaker violates these rules, the chair may rule the speaker out of order and upon second evaluation, have the speaker removed from the podium. Madam Clerk, do you have anyone signed up?
Ms. John Meredith still here? Okay, Timmy Law?
Please state your name and address for the record, please. How are you today, sir?
I'm doing good. How are you all?
I'm good.
My name is Timmy Law. I live at seventy-three seventy-three Snow Creek Road. Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. I served as a volunteer with Snow Creek Rescue Squad for forty-eight years, and I currently serve as captain. Tonight I speak with mixed emotions, gratitude, pride, and deep frustration. First, thank you to the board and especially Mr. Brian Carter for working with us to process receipts for our station addition. receipts for our station addition. Our community raised over $80,000 and the board contributed $100,000 to help build living quarters for our career staff. That partnership shows that what what's possible when we all work together. But despite all that, Snow Creek is worse off today than we were five years ago. After career personnel were hired, Deputy Chief Ludeman coordinated with us to staff Snow Creek 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on rotation. He provided schedules, duties and even equipment to keep the crew engaged. It worked real. My rail was high. Our community stepped up to raise funds and the board approved the remaining costs for our addition. That was pride in Snow Creek. We built something together. Then everything changed. Once the new public safety director was hired, staffing at Snow Creek was quietly pulled with no notice to me or Chief Law. When I reached out to one of the career staff to see what was happening, I was told that the director had reassigned them elsewhere. No explanation, no communication. We were not informed or consulted. This was all done behind our backs. This isn't just poor leadership, it's a complete disregard for the Snow Creek community. This isn't about turf or power, it's about public safety. Snow Creek residents are now waiting longer for emergency response and their confidence in this system is slipping. There is a new real danger that lives, their lives could be lost due to delayed EMS response times. This is not speculation. Let me be clear, the lives of Snow Creek citizens matter and their safety should not be sacrificed due to departmental politics. Chairman, I watched you speak patient or passionately last month about the Red Valley Road. You stood your ground because it was the right thing to do. I asked you and the board to bring the same resolve to this issue. We in Snow Creek will not stop until this wrong is made right. I urge you all to investigate this situation. The documents, the timelines, the communications, we have minutes exist to verify everything I've shared tonight. I ask that you take time to understand the gravity of what's happened. In closing, I hope you show the citizens of Snow Creek that their lives really matter just as much as the rest of the county, but not by empty words, but by positive actions. I welcome the opportunity to meet with any of you personally to discuss anything that I've said tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Mike Fowler.
If I may, if there's other members of Snow Creek who would like to speak first before I go, can I give them that opportunity?
Oh, okay. Is there anybody else here from Snow Creek that has signed up to speak? Even if you haven't signed up to speak, if you want to speak, come forward. Okay, chief.
Uh just so you, do you know me? It's Michael Fowler, 1615 Turkey Cock Lane, Penhook. Uh this is more designed to also give you guys an opportunity to, if you have some questions regarding the staffing, especially with Snow Creek. I'll stand here affirmed right in front of you and agree with Captain Law. Snow Creek needs staffing. So does Callaway. So does Fork Mountain. So does Rocky Mount. So does Boons Mill. Not one station in this county, not one, is more important than the other. I live in Snow Creek. I live further than both of these leaders. That means even if I have staffing, I, time is still of the essence if I have an emergency at my home. Snow Creek matters, but my ego will not allow me to put Snow Creek ahead of this community. Just as all of you sit and stand, you represent one district, but you represent 722 square miles as a whole. Supervisor Mitchell, we've had a lot of conversations about this and I appreciate that and I understand the gravity. It's very important to you and I, and I am Robin Peter to pay Paul in your district and for that I want to apologize. But what do I do, folks? You've granted me the ability. That's March 1st. I've had 100 applications that have come in. Zero of the ALS providers have come all the way to fruition to getting to interviews. We have a great pay plan. It just has to get out there. If I hire somebody today and they're not qualified, it takes months to get there. I'm righting wrongs that have been here for a year. I have been hard pressed and browbeat by the men and women standing behind me and men and women like them, and I still stand reserved in in front of you. Forty-five minutes, that captain berated me in front of one of our supervisors and I still stand affirmed and committed to that community. I will stand resolved and committed straightforward, but if we want to have a resolution together, it needs to be together with some understanding. I will get staff in Snow Creek and I am working on that, but I can't force the applicants to come. This is not Field of Dreams, if you build it, they will come. I wish that was the reality with this. The reality is, is that I have to meander through this and yes, I'm working through it. We've got part timers, we're trying to get out there. I cannot help that I was handed a ship that was listed and it's taken me a year and we're starting to write it, but now it has to set sail. Staffing not only there is a priority, but staffing everywhere is a priority. It is unacceptable in this county that I run four trucks out of seven career trucks a day. It is not just Snow Creek that is affected, but we're working on it. I'm down to only four positions left to fill till I'm back up to having all my trucks staffed, not my overhired, but my trucks staffed. That's monumental from where I've been at before. And I just want to say it's with through your, your support and your efforts that I've been here and I'll continue to stand resolved with any of these folks here and to the community.
Thank you, chief.
If you guys have any questions?
No, sir. Any, uh, anyone else uh wish to come and address the board? Sir, you've already had your time. I'm sorry. No, sir, not tonight. Anyone else here wish to come forward and talk, speak? All right. All right, well, we're going to adjourn the meeting. Uh there's no further business that I'm aware of. We will recess until 3 o'clock on Thursday, May the 22nd, for our work session. Thank you all for being here tonight.